Hi, I'm going to call this meeting to order if we're all wonderful. Ready?
Yep.
Okay. Seven o'clock. And you can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I was looking for an approval of agenda and then we can add, make changes, or do whatever. I'm looking.
I would make.
Thank you. Okay. I have an addition under where we're looking at VSBA resolutions that was supposed to include looking at the bylaw amendments and edits that the VSBA was making. And the reason it's on the agenda is because they're having their annual meeting on the 4th and 5th of November, and we have to send a representative, and we'll get to that agenda item later, but those are the things that we need to vote on at that meeting. So I wanted to add it to the agenda. Also, the community engagement committee had a report to go under the finance, I guess, under 14. And I'm trying to think if there was anything else. Those are my changes. Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah. A couple of things, I guess. One is the ad hoc committees.
Yep. I have that listed because we have still not given them a charge.
Right.
It didn't get put on the agenda because I don't know why.
Okay.
I think it just got missed because we didn't deal with it last time and it just didn't get picked up.
Maybe we can put it under transact, other legal business, or somewhere down.
We can do that. I had it under, I had a note to myself to put it under agenda building, but we can do that. We've talked about it often enough.
Doesn't matter. The other question I had is, I know things went well when we met at the last meeting on the 6th in terms of the board goals, but if we're only going to do part of a goal, a meeting, we'll be meeting, we won't get through the board goals until next Christmas.
Well, it's not quite that bad, but yeah.
So, yeah, I know, I'm exaggerating, and I apologize for that. But I really think I would like us to, as a board, reexamine the idea, and I know it's almost impossible to make sure that, to set a date and a time that every single board member can attend, but I really think we need a couple of hours of focused meeting time to deal with the board goals. And I don't know how else you do that other than having it on a Saturday or a Tuesday.
So you'd like to add this conversation to the agenda?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I'll be quiet, sorry.
Well, no, that's okay. I'll put it under other legal business so that we don't forget.
Sure. Thank you.
Sure.
I have a couple of things.
Yep.
A little birdie in my ear just tweeted, "Do we need number eight?" Since David is not here.
I'm assuming somebody will take care of that. Number eight is the COVID update. Is anybody raising their hand? Jody, Brian?
Give a little bit of.
Okay.
Okay. The other thing is, I'd like to have a quick comment under for policy about a possible reschedule.
Okay. So under community engagement, what's with policy?
Uh, the committee business.
Yeah, well, that's what I meant, under community. I'd already added community.
Okay, yeah. Just to.
Yep. Good. Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Anybody else? Given that, I will call the question of approving the agenda. All in favor of the agenda with changes?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. I did want to, now that we're on to public input and announcements, Dave is not here tonight. He had a family situation that he had to go home and deal with, so obviously we said, "Go." And I wanted to absolutely not forget to congratulate and announce Karen McCullough's being the, is she in there?
Yep.
Okay. If we could get her attention, we're all going to. She's our teacher of the year for Vermont this year.
Straight ahead toward the right.
Oh, good.
I was thinking she was recording.
Working with kids, what kind of thing is that?
Go ahead.
A teacher can always do many things at once.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. I just wanted to make sure that you knew how pleased we were that you won that honor because you deserve it.
It's been an exciting time, and I'm really excited to advocate for STEAM and stuff we do here in schools and Vermont teachers.
Okay, thank you.
I thought we were being too loud.
No, no, we're good. And then, that was all I had. And other than that, we will open it up for public input, but I don't have the list, so let me go grab it.
I thought this was like the organ.
So Crystal, you are first on the list wanting to speak.
Hello, Crystal Usher, Claremont in Vermont. Just have a couple of things I want to touch on tonight. One is that I have noticed on a number of occasions, several board members abstaining from voting, and that concerns me a bit. It's my understanding that you would only abstain from voting if there was a conflict. And it appears that sometimes, I feel like anyways, that members are abstaining from voting when they feel like their position may offend the public. That kind of defeats the purpose of your sitting up there. So I really encourage you, rather than to abstain, to really voice your opinion. If you look through the minutes, it's happened at a number of meetings on a number of different topics. Also, just around our curriculum, around our curriculum, I understand we have a curriculum director, and then obviously Mr. Younts has some input on how our curriculum is chosen. Obviously, there's a lot of discussion in the state and across the country in regards to CRT. I don't know what that means for our schools or our future, regardless of what side or what position you may take on that topic. I would hope that there is some type of committee or process in which our curriculum is chosen and reviewed, the books, you know, our book reading list. How is that prioritized and chosen? I'm hopeful that it's not just done by two single members of our school system, but more of a collaborative effort to result in the best education for our students. So that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. We'll ask Jody to speak to your question when we're done with public comment.
Hello, everyone. I'm Molly, and I teach at Wallingford Elementary as a special educator. I'm here to express my disappointment and the decision to expect educators to get vaccinated. I do appreciate that we have a way forward where testing negates getting a vaccination, but I am still disappointed in these new requirements. I'm concerned about further mandates that would be coming our way. We claim to be a district that stands by equitable principles. However, enforcing a vaccine that's brand-new, I do not see as equitable at all. It goes directly against our district's focus on equity when unvaccinated people are forced to test on their own time without district financial support, and vaccinated people. Vaccinated people don't have to do this, even though the CDC itself says vaccinated people still spread the virus. Also, it's discriminatory when you will pay for vaccinated people's leave time who have to quarantine, but unvaccinated people have to spend their own leave time if they have to quarantine. I'm not one of the people who believe COVID is a hoax. I know it's very real, and it's impacting people's lives in many ways. And I'm grateful that there is now an option for those who wish to increase their protection from the virus. However, not everyone is comfortable getting the new virus. The new vaccine, sorry. There's no reasonable way that this vaccine has been tested to the level it needs to be in order to ensure there are no long-term negative impacts. Most, if not all, medications have side effects, and scientists will not know the true long-term effects until the vaccine has been studied for years. The data regarding short-term effects has not been presented in a way that's easy to access. As a young woman, I don't wish to be part of this experiment, and this is why. An uncle of a close friend in his early 50s died within 24 hours of getting the vaccine from heart failure. This man's brother had to return to the hospital two to three times as a result of inflammation around his heart. He never had these symptoms before the COVID shot. Our neighbor, who never suffered from headaches, has had regular headaches since the shot. Is this scientific data? Maybe not, but it is an example of some serious what-ifs. There are many what-ifs surrounding this vaccination. There's also the matter of conflicting information. We're told to get the vaccine, that once we are vaccinated, we do not have to wear a mask in public. Our rights are then given back to us once we receive the vaccine. However, Dr. Fauci said in an interview that even though you get the vaccine, you can still spread the virus to other individuals, and we know this to be true. For example, three vaccinated friends of my family took a road trip together. They later discovered that one of them had COVID and was asymptomatic. The other two then caught COVID from him and also tested positive. So, in the name of equity, why is it then that those who are vaccinated can live under a different set of rules than those who are not? I understand that the district is responding to mandates that are coming down federally or from the state level, but I say the district should not just blindly follow what we're told to do. The federal government and state governments should not be forcing a vaccine on the people. There is an expectation that when it's my body, it's my choice, but in regards to the vaccine, it seems to be my body, government, and employer's choice. There is much diversity of fact and opinion around this issue. If we are truly a district that stands for equity, cultural differences, different ways of thinking, then we should prove it, stand for people's individual choice when it comes to their body and their decisions regarding their health. Both my parents are vaccinated. I'm not, but I may choose to get vaccinated. I'm not anti-vax. It's an amazing scientific feat that saves lives all around the world. I'm thankful those who want the vaccine have the option. What I'm here to do is ask that you, our school board members and our administration, will oppose any further mandates on my behalf. I'm not happy with our current expectation, but I'm willing to accept it as meeting in the middle. Further mandates would not be. Thank you for your time, and I hope you know that I mean this with respect.
Thank you, Molly.
I'm from Ira, and put two girls through school here at Mill River High School. So that would be probably somewhere around $100,000 worth of education dollars that went to the school from my family. So I feel like I paid the piper, so I get a voice in calling the tune. I've had the shot. I had to have the shot because of my job. It's required, and they would have fired me if I didn't take the shot. But I understand it, and I can rationalize it out because my job involves going to countries where we don't have the guarantees and the protections built into their society that we have here in America. So when I'm in Rome, I do as the Romans do. But in America, it's of the people, by the people, and for the people. That's me. And I don't want to see people being mandated to get the shot here. With smallpox, 300 of 1,000 people died. They mandated the vaccine. I can wrap my head around that. In Vermont, nine of 1,000 people died from COVID. We don't have a problem that warrants you needing to force your people to get the shot. If Colin Powell were a Vermonter, we could count him in that nine. He had two shots and a booster. And people with his condition are still dying. People in my cross-section, and a lot of your younger teachers and the children in the school, not so much. This is why you don't force them to get vaccinated. U.S. News &amp; World Report said that Colin Powell could have caught COVID from an asymptomatic, fully vaccinated individual. I think that's pretty likely, since I believe around 80% of us are vaccinated. This weakens the case for my needing to be vaccinated, and it's another reason why you're truly not justified in forcing people to vaccinate. This is to say that being asymptomatic with COVID is typical. I mean, I know people that were asymptomatic, and they were spreading it around. It's these people who are unknowingly spreading it around, and this is why you don't force people to vaccinate. 89% of scientists polled in one poll, it was through Nature Magazine, which I'm not actually familiar with, but it sounds reasonable to me. They feel that there is no stopping this. This is an endemic. There's no stopping this constantly mutating virus. So why force us to vax? We're constantly chasing the new mutation with our vaccines. Now, why would anyone willingly vax? Because it lessens the individual's incidence of COVID and the symptoms. That's a good reason to go get the shot. But it's not reason enough for you to force anyone to do it. I would ask what Molly asked. Stick with the accommodations that you're making for your people right now. It's basically a pretty meeting in the middle. And don't force your people to vaccinate. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Christine Billings.
I felt the comment for the verbal part, I'm truncating quite a bit, but I'm going to just give it to you guys like this because that seemed to work good. So, in order to ensure full transparency, we request that this board motions to have a curriculum committee created that is comprised of multiple school board members and multiple community members to review and approve present and future curricula. First, we would like to take a quick glimpse of the type of American historical facts that we plan to teach using reliable primary resources that allow our children to critically think and draw their own conclusions. Enslaved Black people were first brought from Africa in 1619. Plantation owners profited from their unpaid labor. Founding fathers were slave owners. John Adams wanted independence for slaves written in the Declaration of Independence, but the South would not sign, and he left it out. Lincoln's inaugural speech, where he states he has no intention to end slavery in established slave states, but also that he grew, he learned, and he improved himself. Emancipation Proclamation didn't free all slaves. Dr. King, Malcolm X, the Civil Rights Movement, and Barack Obama. This is not exhaustive, but the point is, it's not whitewashed. The only reconciliation our students are taught points back to people of European descent are evil, slave-holding, white supremacy-believing oppressors. We have not taught facts, continuity, change, cause or effect. We have dishonored many immigrants, none of whom owned slaves and oppressed people of color. We dishonor many that fought at Normandy so that men like Hitler could no longer practice ethnic cleansing. We must look at the root causes of the Holocaust and figure out how this could have happened in the 20th century. What pushed people to perform such acts of horror? By limiting our focus just black and white and villainizing Euro-American contributions to history, we alienate generations of good people who oppressed no one. There have been oppressors across every nation in the world. Not one country is without acts of slavery, to the point it goes on to this very day. Humans can be beautifully kind and heinously evil. African-Americans need not feel bad knowing their own ancestors sold them into slavery for rum and weapons. White Americans need not feel bad knowing what their ancestors did to enslave and inhibit others' freedoms. We need to focus on our common humanity in order to break the cycle of racism and discrimination. This leads us to circle back to the district's lack of transparency and the district's focus on white supremacy culture for in-service teacher training that is filtering into the classroom, the proof of the young students coming home saying ideological things. White supremacy culture is not a fact. It is a theory or belief, and calling it poison is an opinion. There is a difference between the facts of history and the different ideological takes on it. The community needs a curriculum committee to be assured that the district is teaching historical facts and not ideology. Again, I submitted fair information. They have information for school boards, private sessions, they'd be able to help facilitate. I also attached the book list that should have been when I did the curriculum, and I forgot to put it with your other package. And that's it. And thank you for volunteer time. I appreciate it. I really do.
Thank you, Christine. Is there anyone else that would like to speak before we close public comments? Okay, I'll open it up for commentary. Jody, would you be able to just run down how the curriculum is?
Sure. So, curricular decisions are made based on the level of use and the level of purchase. And so what I mean by that is, we work really hard to have what's called a coordinated curriculum because having things standardized, where if a kid moves from first grade in Wallingford to first grade at Tinmouth, if they're experiencing the same resources, it is better for those students, especially because they're all coming together at Mill River. So anything that is part of the coordinated curriculum, that would be things like Fontes and Pennell, Eureka Math, oh gosh, some of the scholastic things we do, Mystery Science, anything that we're doing that we're using on a larger level, responsive classroom. Those decisions are made by the leadership team working together, and then approval for purchasing any of those materials comes to you because it's over that $15,000 mark, and we have to say on camera in front of you why we believe it's the best choice and give three other alternates. We try, you know, no curricular material is perfect, but we do a lot of work and research to try to get the best thing that we possibly can in any purchase. Now, there's another layer to that that is a school-based resource. So for example, when Wallingford decided that they wanted to use dovetail to do their social-emotional learning, only Wallingford was using that, and so Wallingford was paying for that, what's out of their local budget, like their school budget. Information about that curricular material being used went home to parents when they started trying that pilot for that curriculum. Now, there's another layer of curriculum choice, and that is in the classroom, and that is where most curricular choices are made. So when Mr. Morton was an English teacher, he chose the books he would teach in a semester, and he would let the administration know, but that was his professional knowledge and his choice. Now, we have, every single teacher in our district is considered highly qualified. That means that they have gone through extensive training in the science of teaching, in the way that they need to teach, and in selection of materials. And so we trust them as professionals who have gone to school to make these choices. Now, we want to work to be as transparent as we can, and so our library media specialists have met and are continuing to work on a policy for a clear, well, not a policy, a procedure, for a clear way to have a curricular resource looked at if any member of our school community has a question about that, by filling out a special form, and then that would go to a committee. It is not ready yet because it has to go through multiple different stakeholder groups to get looked at, because we like to be really careful when we're doing things to make sure we're doing things as best as we possibly can. That should be done soon, and then that would be clearly on the website for anyone who wanted to access that. I will say, though, it is my passionate belief that our educators are intellectual professionals who are doing what they believe is best for students every single day. And so major curricular choices should be made by those with professional training and knowledge, and should be made, never, there's not a curricular choice that is made just me and Dave in a room. Teachers are the stakeholders, so if we're going to make any large curricular choice, we're always going to bring groups of stakeholders together. But I do think it's, I think it's important that we bring the community in, have really transparent conversations whenever we can. But I also, I need to say that I think it's really important that the people that have this training, I have endorsements in being a principal, a superintendent, a curriculum director, a social studies teacher, a school counselor. I don't know how to choose math curriculum without speaking to math teachers. I can do my research, but I need to listen to the math teachers because it is not one of my endorsement areas. And it's really important to know that our teachers are the professionals, and they have that expertise. I don't know nearly as much about English as Mr. Morton does.
So, could you tell me exactly who is on the administrative team?
On the leadership team?
The leadership team.
Every single building administrator, every single.
I don't know what that means.
Okay, so the principals of all five schools, the assistant principal of Mill River, the central office administrators, that's the four of us. Dr. Gardner Bosch, Ms. Simonetti, Ms. Minieri. I have to go through in my head.
So what's Ms. Simonetti?
So she is a member of it because she is doing some leadership-based work as our arts director.
And Minieri is athletic?
Athletic director, yes.
So I don't see any English teachers or math teachers on this team?
So each one of the administrators do have to hold some teaching content area, but yeah, we're, so the leadership team is not making curricular choices without consulting departments.
Okay. I just want to clarify one thing you said about my choosing the books we did.
Okay.
It's not completely true. We used to meet weekly as a department, and we, as a department, decided these four or five books could be taught at different levels.
Okay.
And then it was up to the teacher to choose one of those four or five books that the department chose. So I didn't unilaterally go out and grab Native Sun and start teaching it.
Right, and I apologize. That is an oversight on my part, and that is absolutely true. And at every single department level, the departments are collaboratively choosing the proficiencies and performance indicators that will be taught at each grade level, and that those are the primary driver of the curriculum that is chosen.
So that should be in their curriculum, right? If I were teaching AP English, and my curriculum that I have to write up, I list the books I'm teaching, the novels I'm teaching, whatever else I'm teaching, writing, grammar, and so each teacher at Mill River is supposed to have that, so I could see that if I wanted to.
Yeah, so that's a great question. So each teacher at Mill River is currently required to give the weekly module out to students and to parents through the Google Classroom. And so that is where any curricular material should show up. We do not require a course syllabus with all material set into it. We do ask teachers to course map what they're going to do, but that is where you would find every single curricular piece used was in those weekly course modules.
So I used to write the year-long.
Right.
The year-long curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
And then I broke that down, that was my guide, and I broke that down into the module.
Right.
I didn't write the module as a come-by-come.
No, and neither are our teachers. The change from what is the more traditional version of education to proficiency-based learning means when we used to plan, we would plan our materials. So as a history teacher, I would plan, I'm teaching 1865 to the present this year, and then I'm going to break it up. In proficiency-based learning, we're using a course map to plan out which proficiencies we're going to teach throughout the year and at what times, and then the curricular choices become the vehicle, but not the driver of that work. So a course map is going to say this performance indicator, then this performance indicator, then this performance indicator, and what short story or novel am I going to use within those?
Right.
Right. But not all teachers provide the full course map to parents, but they provide every single curricular thing they're using in their classroom in the module.
That's what I'm asking. Can a parent say, "I'd like to see the course curriculum for my son in your class," and it should list, "These are the novels, these are the short stories that we're going to choose from."
So.
If they have a course curriculum. I knew I was going to teach Lord of the Flies, I was going to teach To Kill a Mockingbird. I knew what I was going to teach.
Right.
Shakespeare, Merchant of Venice, I know I'm going to teach this, and that's the vehicle I'm going to use to teach, to accomplish the proficiencies.
Yes, so when it comes to novels for English, my assumption is absolutely yes. Every single one of our secondary English teachers knows the novels they're going to teach. In other disciplines, the. In other disciplines, the grain size of material is much smaller, and so, as a history teacher, I might not be able to tell you every single thing, I could tell you the core text I'm using, but I wouldn't be able to tell you every single material. But if you were asking a English teacher, "Which novels are you going to use this term?", they would be able to tell you that.
Yeah, well, I taught history for a long time also.
Right.
That was my first degree.
Right, so you, you hear what I'm saying, I would use a core text and a variety of materials, but I wouldn't be able to necessarily tell you in January what I'm going to use through June on those, because it depends so much on what a kid needs.
All right, I'm going to be quiet just a second. But I have the curriculum.
Right.
And this is what you're going to learn. You're supposed to know, coming into my class, to do well in this class, get a 4-3-2-1, you need to have, know this knowledge.
Right.
You know, I don't care if you know who the 12th Pope was in the Catholic Church, I don't care.
No, because-
I don't care if you know what battle was fought on July 3rd, you know, in 1863, I don't care. That's not what you're going to have to learn in my class. So, they know what they're going to use to teach. If they've taught the class before, they know what they're going to teach, they know what they're going to use to get that taught. I just want to know, and I guess some board members too, are the parents going to be privy to what their overview of what they're teaching?
A, and a parent can reach out to any teacher at any time and ask for an overview.
Okay.
I do-
Sorry. As a parent, I get the weekly Google Classroom sent, and at the first parent-teacher conference, I have actually asked for the curriculum for the year on certain teachers of my sons, so that way I could do it with them and go over it with them at the parent-teacher conference and know what I'm going to be looking at for like that specific class. If it's a class that my son's having trouble in, or it's a class that, you know, hey, he's doing great, how am I going to challenge him? Just with that window of from when school started to the first parent-teacher conference, so it is available. You just have to proactively for your child, which I've done for the last two years, so.
I think Christine also has a question, clarifying a question.
I do. It's sort of, it's nice to hear that teaching is like construction. You get a scope, and then you get a contract with those means and methods. So, this goes right back into the equity training that's being given to teachers. The ideological things kids are coming home with that are not facts, their opinion, is definitely then being coming from the in-service trainings and the equity message of candy books and whatnot. Beautiful, thank you.
Uh, so I would just, I would just add to that, that, you know, when choosing any training, we try to choose somebody who is well-known in the field, who has a wide variety of experience in that field, and who has degrees in that field. And I do want to say, I'm always available if you want to have a meeting. I don't want to talk about individual kids, of course, at a board meeting, but if you have a story about a kid and you'd like to meet, I would always be willing to meet.
There's more than one.
If you have a story, but I don't want to talk-
No, I'm not going to say a kid's name, Jody, don't worry. I understand the rules.
Wonderful.
The point is, is there's factual history that's not kind, and then there's opinion, and kids are coming home with opinions, they're too young to have the opinions yet. And that's the issue. So, if teachers are getting trained in white supremacy culture is poison, don't breathe it in, that's what your professionals are going to start putting down into the classrooms. And that has been my basis from the beginning of my comments. And you just confirmed with me, which thank you, that basically teachers, I've gotten, you know, it's a scope of work. And then the professional comes in and puts the means and methods to it. I get it. But now I know that it is definitely coming through this equity training, that these teachers are giving information to kids that's not appropriate. It's not fact, it's opinion.
So, the, the core of our equity work is the importance of every kid feeling valued and loved, the importance of teaching critical thinking, and the importance of teaching kids to make their own opinions based on facts and good sources.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you, thank you.
Lynn?
Yeah, just to comment, Crystal, I want to respond to, to your question in terms of abstentions, and I can only speak for myself. The only time I will abstain from a vote is if I wasn't here at the meeting. So, again, I'm only speaking for myself. So, when you see an abstention from me, it's because I, you know, let's say I missed a board meeting, I won't, I'll abstain from approving the minutes because I wasn't here.
My comment was in regards to the raising of the US and state flag and then the ethical complaint.
Right, and I understand that, and I just wanted to explain where I come from.
Are there any other comments, because we, we have to move along? Go ahead, Bruce.
But this is-
Yep.
Molly said that they have to pay for their own testing?
That is what's agreed to-
I was at Castleton, we tested three times a week, and there are groups that will do it, I don't know if they still do it. I run a summer camp, we test it every week, and they did it for free through the government. We didn't pay anything for it. So, my question is, why are we having our teachers pay for, it sounds like a punitive thing to me?
I don't believe it. It's a punitive thing, I don't know if anybody knows of, of places that will test every week on a multiple basis now that the state of emergency is over.
That's I'm just asking, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I do know that the, the protocol that has been set down has been agreed to and signed off on by the Teachers Association. In fact, they approached the administration with the idea.
But we didn't have anything to do with it.
We did not.
Okay.
Okay. We will move on to approval of minutes for 10-6. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes, and then we can make any changes?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, are there any changes that anybody has? Or additions? Hearing none. I'll call a question, do we approve the minutes of 10-6? Please say aye if you do. Or raise your hand, or, Bruce? Oh, yes, thank you. Okay. Context across the pre-K through 12 spectrum presentation, and I believe Sarah is going to start, or is Jody going to introduce you?
Yes, I probably will be quick. I am sick of my own voice, too.
Hold on just a sec.
Hold on one second. Were, were there two sets of minutes, ones that started at eight, and one, or seven, and one that started at eight? Or were they all the same?
I thought they all went into the same minutes. It was just goals follow-up discussion.
Okay, that's fine, I'm asking.
Right, yeah, no, they were included.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
I just didn't want to miss anything.
Yep, sorry.
Sorry.
No problem. So, we're hoping tonight is the first in a series of presentations that we would like to get, give to the board and the community about varying aspects of our district. We have heard the request for more information about the day-to-day decision-making in our schools, and how all of the decisions come together into a big picture. So, tonight, we wanted to start with an introduction just about different programs that we are working to put in place across the context of the 13, 14, 15, if we're lucky, years that a child might spend in our district. So, we're going to start with a introduction of some pre-K work that Sarah Bolster, our pre-K coordinator, has been doing since she came on this, this summer. And then we're going to move to a presentation from Mr. Velastro and Mr. Lannan on some good work being done at Clarendon Elementary. And then move on to Ms. Thompson, who's going to talk about the work the school counseling department has been putting together to really make sure that kids feel supported as they choose their, their classes at Mill River and move on to choose their futures outside of our schools. So, I'm going to hand it over to Sarah and hopefully take you through ages 3 to 18.
So, as Jody mentioned, I'm Sarah Bolster, and I'm the new pre-K coordinator from the district, and I recognize a ton of faces here since I was on the board for a while. But thanks for having me tonight. I guess the first thing I just would like to say is that coming into this position, I'm really impressed with the staff that we have in our four pre-K programs in each of our schools. I find them to be incredibly knowledgeable, very dedicated and enthusiastic. The pre-K teachers, some of you may be aware, but they have to follow the guidelines and regulations from the Agency of Education, but they also have to follow the guidelines and regulations through the Agency of Human Services, which is actually a very top-heavy, very important work, but there's a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross. And that work really has been, in previous years, fallen, fallen on the responsibility of the teacher, on the teachers. There's a lot of paperwork that has to be done, a lot of documentation, everything from small things like outlet plug covers, making sure that there's certain water testing being documented, things that are typically out of the teacher's realm. So, I just want to thank them for all of their dedication and the extra time that they've put, that they've put into this position. So, my focus and my job is really this year to take a lot of that paperwork load off the teacher's plates, because they're with the kids all day, and they want and need to be focused for the kids in the classroom and supporting families. So, I've been so far to date really trying to streamline operational procedures. Believe me, none of this stuff is really that exciting that I'm saying right now, but it's really crucial and important work in order for us to be in compliance and maintain our regulations for our childcare license, which we have to have to be able to run our universal pre-K programs. So, it is important work. One of the first things that I've worked on with the teachers is we have aftercare programs in each of our four schools, and some of them have before-school programs for pre-K students. And the teachers were actually doing all of the billing for that for families, because there is a fee for service for that. There's also a component where families, if they're income-eligible, can qualify for childcare subsidy. And there's a certain set of requirements that teachers have to do with submitting attendance and billing the state for that. So, I've taken those pieces off the teacher's plate, streamlining that, and actually have rolled it into the business offices' financial software system, so we can better track this, monitor it, and kind of take a closer look really at how our programs are structured. Each of our programs is structured a little bit differently, and that is a goal of mine to continue to look at this year with potentially some changes for next school year. Some of our schools have before-care programs starting at 7:00. All of them have programs that run until about 5:00 or 5:30 for families that need the care for their children. The access for programs is a little bit different. For an example, there could be a three-year-old in one school that could have universal pre-K access, meaning that our district is able to draw down funds from the state for, up for 10 hours a week for 35 weeks out of the year. And some schools have like 17 and a half hours for a three-year-old. Other schools may have 25 hours that the family can access. So, I, I want to streamline that and create equitable access for all students that attend each of our schools in the district. So, there's ways moving forward that I'm going to continue to look at some market research and how other school districts are handling this, as well as private providers, how they set up their fee structures, and going to be doing market research this year, pulling together information to come up with a recommendation of how we can move forward and potentially make our pre-K program more financially sustainable. Another big component is the orientation and training of staff in our programs. So, we have our pre-K teachers and our paras that work in our program that, again, go through the training and orientation of the Mill River School District, but again, there's a whole nother set of very extensive training that has to be done through the Child Development Division. So, I'm working on streamlining that process, making sure that it's all complete and all the paperwork is filed that needs to be. One of the, kind of the challenges that I've ran, I've run into so far is that we have a lot of what is titled auxiliary staff that work in the pre-K programs, which include our specials teachers, art, PE, and then we have SLPs, OTs that work in the program that also need to meet certain pre-K requirements, to be able to even go into the classroom to provide that one hour, 40, 40 minutes per day of programming. So, I'm working with them to get the training and credentials and everything uploaded into the system that we need to do. A little bit more exciting is we've also been coordinating our half-day early release days to be more focused as a pre-K group, to focus on professional development, whereas in the past, it's been kind of lumped in with the K through 6 or the K through 12 educational system, and it's, it's really almost its own world, early childhood, and it needs its own professional development. So, we've started that this year. One of the things that I'm really excited about is that we've gone through eight hours of extensive training, and in this new tool, which we're in the process of implementing, and it's a developmental screening tool called Ages and Stages, and it's used on a national level in private programs, private childcare, private preschool, Head Starts, and public schools. And what it is, it's a questionnaire that is administered, that we will administer two times a year in coordination with parent-teacher conferences. And the questionnaire is actually filled out by the parent or guardian, and it focuses on their experiences with their child in the areas of social-emotional development and cognitive developmental milestones. And then that questionnaire, in return, goes to the teachers, and there's a scoring criteria. So, there could be things on there that a parent has a question or concern about. The parent can see this in a pretty black-and-white fashion, and it can really be able to start a conversation to be able to help support the family. This is not a comprehensive assessment, it's a developmental screening tool. So, if there is something on this developmental screening tool, for, say, for example, with articulation of speech of a young child, it can be a flag for the teacher. They can begin the process of having that conversation with the parent to figure out what next steps, recommendations need to happen in the classroom to be able to support the child, or if there needs to be a referral made to special education or to another outside partner for a comprehensive evaluation. So, right now, we do not actually have a developmental screening tool in place, so this is a really big deal, and I'm very excited about it. So, the teachers, as I mentioned, are in the process of implementing this, and they're enthusiastic about this as well, and view this as a really valuable tool. And then the one last piece I would like to say about that is that we're able to partner with a consortium in Vermont called Help Me Grow, where we're actually accessing this developmental screening tool at no charge. And there's an online process that parents can choose to participate in, or they can choose to use a paper copy questionnaire. But with this online system, it actually gets hooked up to a database. So, if they provide their consent, we have direct communications with the child's primary care doctor. So, if a parent is uploading questions, for example, some concerns about articulation with speech, that child's primary care doctor can access that and have that information at that next child, well, child visit. So, that's pretty innovative stuff, to really be able to, like, look outside of just our classroom, our educational system, and really involving families in the process, as well as other outside providers. So, very excited about that. And then, so, again, this year, outside of developing or implementing this screening tool, a lot of the focus will be on putting in operational procedures that are consistent across all four schools, and being able to increase the focus for professional development for pre-K staff on that. And then hopefully, once we get those really essential foundational pieces in place, moving forward into next year, we can really look at program enhancements and program quality improvements. So, in a nutshell, that's what's going on.
In a nutshell.
Yeah.
I have a quick question, since you just about said.
Ask if you had any.
From your description, the, the programs are pretty, pretty disparate-
Yes.
-amongst the schools. And I, I thought I heard you say that you were, you were looking at streamline, does that mean you're trying to bring them into some kind of, you know, there's the same number of hours offered in this school and the same number of hours in that school? Do, do parents now, I mean, I know they have the ability to choose a different school-
Right.
-as part of the school choice program. Is that utilized a lot for pre-K?
There's not a lot in- There's not a lot inter-district in between our schools right now, but I also manage, you know, the universal pre-K program, which is a ruling where, you know, students essentially in pre-K have choice to be able to attend a different school outside the district or even to attend a program with a qualified provider, not any childcare provider, but certain providers that are qualified. So right now, we have seven children from out of district attending our pre-K programs at our four schools, and then we have seven children in our district attending other school-based programs or private providers.
Yeah. When we set up the tuition for those pre-K programs, I know if they come in through universal pre-K, they get 10 hours, you know, from their home district, I'm assuming. How does the rest of the hours get taken care of? Are we charging?
So that's a great.
The rest of the hours, and I mean, given, like in Tinmouth, they have a much longer day than, say, in Truysbury. How does that work?
So this is a great question that you have, and I'm kind of unfolding all of this as I've begun in this position. So right now, it's the state sets the tuition rate, which is approximately $3,500 for that 10 hours a week for 35 hours per week. At Tinmouth, for an example, you could have, and Maureen, correct me if I'm wrong, but about 35 hours' worth of programming essentially from like eight until three.
For the four-year-olds.
For the four-year-olds. So if we have a student out of district that's choosing to go to Tinmouth Mountain School preschool program, that's a four-year-old, we're getting reimbursed at that $3,500 rate. And there's not a charge, a fee for service at this point in time to make up that difference above, up and beyond the 10 hours per week. So that's something that we need to be able to look at and implement, I believe, for not only students outside the district but within our district as well. There's ways of structuring fee service programs in childcare where we can leverage really easily and really well the childcare subsidy program. The reimbursement from the state for families that qualify is really high. And we can leverage that funds, those funds, to be able to help to make our programs more financially sustainable. There's also ways to seek out private funding, which I have experience doing, to be able to scholarship families that may kind of fall through those cracks of not being eligible from an income standpoint from the state subsidy program, but may be challenging to have a fee for service for the program.
Yeah, thank you. Sounds like you've got a lot of work to do.
There is, there is.
Welcome, by the way. We haven't said that yet.
Thanks, Adrian.
Any questions for Sarah? Thank you.
Okay.
Sure, we'll hear from you again.
Hello.
Hey, Fred.
Fred Velashro, principal, proud principal of Clarendon Elementary, and this is Mike Lanin. Mike Lanin, you can join me up here if you want to. One of our many extraordinary teachers, and Mike teaches fifth and sixth grade math and science. What I'd like to do is give a little brief background on where we got to this point. We're going to be talking about project-based learning and how we got there and what it's all about and what we're doing. And then Mike will give you an idea on what he's doing in math and how he's implementing project-based learning in math. And then we'll open it up for questions and answers after that, if that's okay with you.
Sounds good.
Okay. I brought notes because, you know, you guys make me nervous, we're all big bosses here. So nine or 10 years ago, Clarendon Elementary was on the bottom. If you're looking at test scores, was on the bottom of the VT Digger list for schools in our region. I mean, literally the absolute last in one category and third in the other category. That's concerning, but one of the bigger concerns for me just starting here was the disengagement of a lot of our kids. Now, some kids, no school, did well, study and do their stuff, but the kids that need something different were disengaged. So we knew we had to do something drastically different. So over the course of the next few years, we had tremendous turnover in our faculty and staff. So that gave me an opportunity to kind of recruit and to hire people with the same philosophical, educational philosophical background. So I saw what Mike was doing, and project-based learning was something that I was familiar with. I must, came from a secondary background. And in the schools that I was in before, we were doing that, and it was very engaging, you know, student choice, student voice. It was, the kids wanted to be there. One of my questions for all of our teachers is, would the child, would the learner be in your class if they didn't have to be? And I can tell you that, with the exception maybe a couple, all of those children really want to be in the class, and they want to learn in this style. So I recruited Mike to start with, and he'll tell you a little bit about how we started off and what project-based learning looked like in the beginning. But we basically looked at folks that would share our dream and our vision. So data is more than just a test score. What's the SEL data? How do people, how do the kids feel when they're in the class? What is happening in the classroom data? What is the mindset data? Do they have growth mindsets? Do they want to learn? Do they want to learn how to learn? So we now saw much more engagement because we gave them choice and interest in what they were doing, and they were building skills, not focusing on direct curriculum. However, we've got a backbone curriculum, like Jody mentioned, Eureka Math. We use Eureka Math. We start off with a lesson, and then when the lessons, individualized, personalized, are done, the kids then move on to projects, and then they apply that math to the projects. I'm sure, I'm sorry, I'm stealing a little bit.
Steal all you want. I don't have to say anything.
So we focused on expanding the PBL, and with the vision from the district, which started off at 2020, Vision 2020, and then went to the Trailhead, that gave us the opportunity to continue to expand. Dave recognized what we were already doing and kind of designated us as the Project-Based Learning School. So we continued to learn ourselves, to improve our practice. We went to training about five years ago now, went to two-day workshop, and we were kind of novice. We were doing things, hoping we were doing them right, based on some research that we were, but when we got to see who was doing it and how they were doing it, it really expanded. We went to a workshop, and the folks from California who had been doing it for years had come in and shared all that information with us. And then we went out and studied Buck Institute and the Terran Institute, and all of these folks that were doing it perfectly. So we did that. So because the district supported that, we moved on and did bigger and greater things. COVID slowed us down the last couple of years because, first of all, we had a shorter day. We couldn't mix kids. Kids had to stay in their own seats. So the last couple of years, it's been a little bit slow, but we're back. We're back to, you know, small-group lessons. We're back to kids working together cooperatively. Mike and I have presented at the Vital Learn Conference, and we're presenting again this year. So people are looking at our school and our district as leaders in this now. It's hard to say that they're looking at us as the experts, but Mike is really the leader in that regard, and it goes all the way down through the grades. Everybody picks a, well, I'll show you what's in each one of the class. The key elements to project-based learning and design, a challenging, real-world problem or question, sustained inquiry, question after question after question, and then student voice and choice in a risk-free environment, which means they get to ask whatever questions are on their mind. And they apply the curriculum to their projects, but feedback, feedback, feedback. We're constantly there, working with the kids and giving them, if you've seen Austin's Butterfly, it's a very slow progression on a student drawing a butterfly. And then you focus on one little area where that student perfects the antenna, and then the next one is the tail. And then, and so by the end of all of this feedback that the student is getting, they've got this perfectly drawn butterfly. So that's the concept of what we're doing, feedback, feedback, feedback with the kids. A lot of reflection and revision, do-overs. Mike is the king of do-overs. Why should a kid get one opportunity to show what he learns? Do it again. Perfect it. Learn even more. And that's an opportunity rather than an A or a C or whatever. And then authentic presentations. Mike will tell you a little bit about what the kids are doing now in regards to their project for the year. They have a year-long goal or question that they're all working on, but they all have different avenues to get there, and he'll share that with you as well. And so we will have a public, authentic presentation at the end of the year in May sometime, which you'll all be invited to join. Now, just like the kids, the teachers are at different levels. So we have Dip Your Toe, Wade In, or Dive Deep, but let's do it. So each one of the teachers at each one of the grade levels can tell you a project that they've done together that just naturally came about by what's going on in the classroom or what the kids were interested in, and they've developed that and used this concept to focus on that. So I think I've talked long enough, Mr. Lanin.
Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
Can I put you under the bus now?
You can.
Well, I joke with Fred though, but project-based learning, when he first hired me to come onboard and develop this, I see you guys down there. You should go home and go to bed. They're waving to me, students. Anyway, I have to give Fred a compliment. You know, I don't know about other administrators in the district, but he and I, and he's in our wing every day. He knows what we're doing, which is good. And I think I heard some parents wondering about that tonight, but from an administrative point of view, thank you very much. He's in our room. He was in my room today, and he was in there popping supper tonight, which is good. So he knows what we're doing, which is a good thing. I think all administrators should really know what's going on in the classroom. That way, they can speak to parents about what it is that they're doing. So I've got tons of books here that I brought with you, and I'm just going to try to talk to you real quick about it because I know everybody would like to get a breath of fresh air, maybe go home. Me too. So project-based learning in a nutshell is letting kids learn how to be really solid, innovative community members. And then secondly, become lifelong learners. That's really what we want children to be. We want them to be lifelong learners. We want them to, we want them to want to read. We want them to want to write. We want them to be able to do all forms of math, math being our critical thinking piece. And all three of those things have been around since as far back as I can read, way past Pythagoras and all the way up through the ancient, they all talked about reading, writing, and arithmetic, and we still do. So I don't want anybody to ever think that somehow project-based learning dumps all of that. It just certainly does not. So very quickly, I think this is my sixth year doing project-based learning, and the first thing that I do, well, there's a bunch of things that I do first with the children, and I guess I should talk about that real quick. The children have a lot of voice and choice. So when they come into the classroom the first day, we organize the class with everybody in fifth grade, on their homeroom teacher, will be for two years, on their looping teacher. So they have 20 minutes. They all have chores, all 24 of them, all got some form of thing they have to do in the classroom, from setting up the My Computer to setting up the whiteboards, to taking care of the warehouses, to taking care of the toolroom, to doing everything else that they need to do, they all have chores. And they get paid for those chores by what I call Lanin bucks. And that's another thing that Fred helped us develop. They can earn recess time in May if they have enough dollars. So as a class, they have to have $120. But I take a lot of that money away for leaving things on the floor, not being responsible, doing those things. So that's a, that's a big piece of becoming a good citizen, becoming a lifelong learner. Those are all skills that we have to have. So based on that, they form a government, they have a legislative body, which is the entire class, they have an executive branch, who's the president of the class, they have a judiciary branch, they have an elected judge, and they have the option to hold class meetings. They have the option to also bring children appropriately to court if they need to. And we kind of watch over that so that it's not inappropriate, but there are times that children need to be told by other children that they're not being appropriate. So that being said, my first experience with project-based learning, Fred always said he'd know it when he saw it, but our first attempt was very much like maybe all of you know. It was a poster put on a wall. Sounded pretty good. That's what we did. Because we were learning. I didn't know what we were doing. And project-based learning, I'm really excited about it because it gave children an opportunity to learn differently than just sitting in a chair like I had to learn. Basically, when I was a student, it was sit down, shut up, or get out. Some of you may remember that. So my chairs were locked to the floor, and so was my desk, and you could open it up this way, and had inkwell in it that had no ink. So that's the way we all learned. That's not the way it is today, and it's not going to be that way. That's the industrial model that we're all going to have to get away with because, get away from, because children have to really be innovative. And that, anecdotally, you know, the Chinese were here, I'm going to say almost 10, 15 years ago, trying to figure out how America had such a good education system. They went home and instituted that program with their children, and they test very well. The Chinese are one of the best in the world at testing and reading, writing, and arithmetic. They're back in this country right now trying to figure out why they can't go from there and innovate anything. One, they don't have the freedom, but two, they're teaching kids to be test-takers. We're not teaching kids to be test-takers necessarily. We want kids to be able to be productive, be able to find a passion that they really like. So that's what project-based learning is all about, is to find a good thing that you're personally interested in, and then work from that to a driving question. So these six driving questions, I just won that you remember, Fred, where they built the airport, that they had to tear down the mountains, and they had, one class wanted to build an airport at Rutland Airport that would land the largest airplane in the world. Well, when they got done, the engineers at Rutland, when they were building that airport over there, they all came to the class, and they couldn't believe how close these kids came to the amount of money it would cost, and the amount of homes they'd have to take away, and the amount of mountains they'd have to tear down, and all the things that they'd have to build in order to fly this airplane in. It was billions of dollars. I don't remember exactly how much, but it was, it was a wonderful project. And those kids are still in school, still maintaining their grades, and I suspect many of them are going to be innovative. So that's changing now, and I'll go to the next piece here and see what I've got. So this is what Fred was talking about, the developmental project-based learning framework for CES, MRU, SSD. This is about 10 years old now, six years old, whatever, when it first came on. Lots of stuff. Don't use it anymore. So I'll pass this out to everybody. This is the driving question for this year. So this year, the children decided, fifth and sixth grade, that they really can't go on field trips because of COVID. And COVID really killed some of the desire. Driving question last year was about COVID, as a matter of fact. They never got to do an authentic presentation. This year, because they cannot go on field trips yet, they have decided to build their own museum for math and science. So they, they're nine weeks into this. They've all got individualized programs and projects in the science and math, and it's requirement to have both math and science in the project, and I'll show that in a minute, what they're doing. But each child has some kind of an individualized plan. So I have two blocks of education. One is the typical math block, which is individualized for every child, 48 of them. And the math has to get done before we go to the project base, and they work very hard because they really want to get to that freedom of being able to work on their project. So it's pretty much a 50-minute block of math and a 50-minute block of science. Sometimes there are days that are a little longer in math, but it depends upon what they're willing to work on, what their productive disposition is. So what else have I got here?
Touch base on that too a little bit, Mike.
Yeah, go ahead.
The math block starts with a group lesson on whatever that topic is, but then individually the kids have to do their I-10 statements. Each one of the kids has a three-ring button that has their to-do's on there, basically, their I-10 statements, their learning targets for the day. And that's basically, it goes directly on how they test in the particular, we use STAR 360. So how they test and what the testing program says that they need to do to improve. So those individual lessons are developed through that. So it's a research-based idea, and then Mike puts together the program for them, right directly off, and then they work on Freckle, they work individually with them, you know, themselves on the computer, and Mike goes around and helps the individual groups. And he's got groups put together at different skill levels, so they help one another. So it's peer-to-peer growth and support, and then Mike will, again, give them feedback as he goes around. When that's finished is when they go and start applying this math to the project, either the, back in the toolroom or the project tables or whatever.
So you've got to remember, we're talking about. So you gotta remember, we're talking about 10 and 11-year-old boys and girls, and they, you know, they have their own little hiccups, but 90% of what they're doing is tremendous, and 10%, you have to really oversee. But this is what Fred's talking about. So this is one child's book. We have 48 of them in the classroom. These little white binders, I got the kid's name on it, won't show that. But when this child goes to his desk, he can tell someone like Jody, or someone like Fred, or any of you that would walk into the room, you can go to that child and say, "What are you working on?" And they will point to you, and they will tell you their ICANN statement, they will tell you what they're working on. And then they'll tell you why they're working on it. And I'd be shocked if they couldn't do it. Even the new child that just came in yesterday, he can do it already. He knows what he's doing, he's already been tested, he already has a book, he already knows what he's doing. And I've worked with him today, so he doesn't, you know, I don't want him to have to sit three or four days and wait for me. I've got him set up so he can go to work. And that's what we do for, in that 50-minute block. So we hit, we hit Freckle, which is designed to tie to our testing scores. Then we hit the white book for the ICANN statements. I do a mini lesson, usually one 5- to 10-minute lesson. Eureka Math, by the way, from pre-K to 8th grade is 35,000 pages long. If you'd like to visit my classroom, I have all of them printed out, and they're all in books. I'm really old-fashioned. I can't use these computers very well. That's why I have kids set them up. But I know what I'm doing as far as taking and reading and helping these kids along. So I know what they need, so we give them a mini lesson. And then as I walk the room, I work with them individually, because they'll raise their hand. I'll have children that will look at me and go, "Go away, I don't need you." And I'll have children say, "I need your help." Which is great, that's the way it ought to be, you know? So I try not to be a sage on the stage like I am right now. I'm much more like a coach on the side. They know what they need, they're 10 and 11, they're growing up, they pretty much know what they really need. So that part is good.
And the project-based learning, they're learning from their project. Yes, they do have to-dos that come directly from the tests that they're taking, but as they're working on the project, similarly to when those, that group of kids wanted to build that airport, they asked, "Well, what do I need to know to figure out, you know, with the trajectory of the plane coming in, and how much room it needs to land, and how many cubic feet of dirt do we have to take off the top of that mountain to do that?" So those kinds of questions make the kids want to know what the math is to figure that out. Instead of you saying, "This is the math you need to know," they're like, "Tell me what I need to know to do this." So that, that's what the learning, what the project-based learning is. It isn't them going out and doing a project, it's learning from the project that they're working on. That's the unique thing. Even today with their, with their project, Mike's got something to show you, with their archaeological stuff that they're studying, they got one group that's looking at dinosaurs, but they're using the math to, you know, tell people how big the dinosaurs were and stuff. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll show that in a minute though, but this is that, that piece at the front end, they've all got these debit sheets Fred helped them design, and he presented the class to them, and they love doing that because they're earning dollars and taking dollars. It's a deposit withdrawal and balance sheet. That's good math. They're gonna use that the rest of their lives, if nothing more than learning how to save money, spend money, checkbooks, things like that. So they're 10 and 11, they need to know the value of money. Fast way to teach money, you know, and teach coinens and all that kind of stuff. So before I get to the last part of the project-based, this is the, I got a lot of these table tents around the room. This is basically for me, have I cared about the kids today? I always care about the kids. Have they collaborated today? Or has it been, has it been a zoo? So they can stand and tell you why they collaborate. They can tell you verbatim what it means even, that they pay attention to the intention. Good value. Okay? They know how to build shared meaning. Another good value. They know how to balance, and they know what this means, balance advocacy with inquiry. Very important skill. They know how to use self-awareness as a resource. They all know who they are in the room. I've spent a long time making sure they know who they are. You know, we know who in the room are the sanguins. They'd rather do tomorrow what they need to do today. We also know who the dominants are. Big picture of the dominant, out of control, the Doberman picture, they'll bite a kid. Not literally, but they can be really, they can be really tough at the table. Are they able to critically think? Okay, that's really important. Are they able to consolidate and connect concepts from, let's say, English to science to math? Okay? Because math is easy, except for one part. This is, you're gonna see that in just a second. So in math, you basically have to just define the problem. You look at the problem, and generally speaking, you either compose or decompose the problem. That's it. You either compose or decompose, or do both. And you either, in composition, you add and multiply, in decomposition, you subtract and you divide. That's pretty much math. You learn how to put together an abstract, simple abstract, 1 plus 1 equals 2, at least the math I teach, not 3 or 5. And then they have to do the computation. Now, in England and the rest of the world, by the way, and I throw this out, because I've talked to Brian about this a little bit, most of the kids in the world today are using calculators. I suspect that most of us in the room are using calculators. So if they understand the concept, most kids aren't gonna do, as we did in school, 7,955 divided by 72, and take you 20 minutes to do all the work. Most kids aren't gonna do that today. They, just, things in their world are just much faster than that. Are they able to communicate clearly and effectively? And do we celebrate their learning? That's for me, and then you've got what they've got on their, their desk you've got in your hand. This is their driving question for the year, and there are sub-questions. And now I'm gonna just finish up here real quick by just showing you what, where did I do that? Good, Fred, you can be the holder. So this is the beginning of a, this is, this is two collaborators that are building art and math for their museum. So there's 25 or 30 boards like this, I don't know, there's 6th graders and 5th graders, there's four children that are designing the museum, two 6th grade girls and two 5th grade boys. And they now know the dimensions of the walls, and where they're gonna hold this, and they've had three big meetings, all about project-based learning, that's part of it. They collaborate, their choice what they're going to do. So every kid in this particular part of the project has to have a mathematics of whatever they're doing. This particular project is on the Triceratops extinction. So they just finished today the mathematics of the Triceratops, and the one part that I really liked, this is them, "The Triceratops was approximately 730, 32 to 1,442 times heavier than we are." So they did some math. I mean, I think, I think they told me that collectively they were 183 pounds or something like that, and so they did the division and all that kind of stuff. Now, what's really exciting, is there's a freehand drawing of their robot, which I gotta get in there with our Teacher of the Year and really do some work with her, because they, kids love robots. They love working with robots, they love that science. I got a couple of kids that still like to look at the stars, but you know how kids look at the stars today? Don't laugh at my phone, they always laugh at my phone. I don't have this on my phone, you know, they can take their phone, it's bigger than this, they click on and say, "Hey, Mr. Lannan, that star's up there right now." They're looking at it on their phone. They're not looking up at the sky. They buy, they buy an app that tells them what's up in the sky. So we can do Sky Night, and it's raining. They don't care, they can see it on their phone. So it's, it's just the way things are. I love it, it's different, it's changing. It's better than when I was in school, when I sat at a desk. That was not so much fun. So that is a design of a Triceratops inside robotics. And I suspect, and I don't know, because I haven't seen what they're planning to do, I suspect that that top picture will be their hand-drawn Triceratops. That's what I'm thinking. Because they're, I have here all of their work for all of the projects. I keep track of everything, so they don't throw away a single piece of paper. That, Fred was talking about revisions, that's six or seven revisions. That's not just, here it is. They've worked hard at getting that done. All those letters pop off the board, there's cardboard behind those letters. That's their thinking. They want, they wanted to present it, you know? It's a kind of a 3D kind of a thing. That's all their work. I don't know where it's gonna go. I mean, there's 24 more just like that, or more. I don't know. That's what makes it exciting. All right?
What makes it uncomfortable for a lot of people, because you don't know where it's gonna end up. You know you want them to get here, some are going straight up the mountain, some are doing a zigzag. They all are gonna get there, but you don't know how they're gonna get there. And you gotta be comfortable enough in what you know and what you don't know to let that happen, and just guide them through the learning.
Two years ago, I had a young lady that did the, she was doing the Ice Age, why it came to be, I forgot what the whole project was, but I'd have to look it up in the book. So she's working on the Ice Age. Ah, gee, she got to the point where I really wanted to jump in and do that project. I mean, it was really getting exciting. You know what she did to me? Go away, Mr. Lannan, I'll call you when I need you. I never did get to finish into that project, she did all, is it time? Good, thanks. Thanks a lot, folks.
So, do you have any questions?
Yeah, if you have questions, ask Fred.
Yeah, um, yes.
We still got the Tyrannosaurus Rex that you guys built like 3, 4 years ago?
What's that? The, the big dinosaur that the kids?
Oh, you know, oh, quick story. That huge dinosaur that they built, that they moved the head?
Yeah.
Okay. They couldn't figure out how to move the head. So one day, one of the boys opened up my desk drawer. He said, "Holy smokes, that's the head." So they took the drawer apart, and they took those sidebars out, right? And they put the sidebars in to the head, attached the head to the sidebars, attached the, forgot what the thing was that they bought, they built one out of cardboard, it didn't work very well, and then we went out and bought the $50 one that allowed them to move the head like that on that drawer slide. And that thing was one-half the size of the Dilaphtaurus, that covered the room. Well, it came time to clean the school. And I told the children, "Move, move that dinosaur and don't break it." They had it going down the hall, and Fred, Fred wanted them to move the, what did I tell you, Fred?
I went down, I saw what they needed to do to move it and get it out of the door, so I stepped in to help them, and he yelled at me right in front of the kids, "Do not touch that, let them figure it out." And they did, they figured it all out.
Yeah, they got it down the hallway safely, and that summer, the janitors couldn't move it, and they destroyed it.
Oh, no.
So that's what happened to it.
Mike, I have to tell you that Peaden still has a robot in my basement, and it was completely made out of cardboard.
Ain't that great?
And still swivels.
I had a sister of one of the projects of 3 years ago, today, talking to me. She said, "Mr. Lannan, my sister's still got all those, all that project up in her room, she's got it all displayed still." Well, what are those kids gonna do with that? I don't think they're gonna throw it away, there's hours and hours of work, they know what to do. They know what to do, and they get to be us as adults. They're gonna be very successful at creating product, being able to build things, or whatever it is that we ask them to do. Well, thank you very much.
These kids are writing, they're writing letters to the experts in the field. Many of them have come and visited the class and given them suggestions. We had that one animator who was a robotics expert, who came in, gave the kids some tips. I mean, we've had the governor in, we've had the secretary in.
Secretary of Education, yeah?
Yeah, the governor called, well, not the governor, but the governor's secretary called the school, and I'm like, "What's going on?" You know, they're asking me when he can come in, and I didn't even know he was coming.
The kids were calling.
Yeah, the kids took it upon themselves to make the contact, and that, this was 3 years ago now. But they set it all up, and the governor came in and talked to them about careers. It was good.
And they invited the Secretary of Education in, yeah? And one of them, there's a lady up in University of Vermont that studies, she's a world-renowned scientist in the study of starfish. We had a kid that was really interested in starfish. She called that lady. Fred and she went up to that lab for an entire day.
PBL, yeah?
Yeah, she spent their entire day with our student. We teach them how to reach out, right? That's good. Yeah, go, what?
So, does every teacher there do PBL, or just you?
They're all, they're all working at PBL.
And they all have the 50-minute blocks?
Well, I'm not quite sure of that, Fred could address that better. I just know what I got.
In the stages, there's a lot of foundational learning that needs to go on. And so they don't have as much opportunity time of day-wise to do these things. So they look for authentic learning. One, oh, I'll tell you, we'll go down to kindergarten. One of the kindergarten classes a couple of years ago, they were using crayons, crayons would break, they'd have small crayons, and they would put it in the crayon hospital. That was their big box to throw the crayons in. And then, so they started to discuss, the kids were talking, "What are we gonna do with all these crayons?" Well, there happened to be, one of the girls in that class was in Girl Scouts, and knew that they had a melting machine, I don't know what you call it, but they talked that through. They ended up separating all the colors of the crayons, melting them, making new crayons, and they put packets together with a little ladybug to color, and they sold them at the craft fair for a buck. It was, it was really cool. Now, that was a way to reuse these crayons. And they talked it all through, can we give them away to people who don't have crayons? And the teacher would say, "Well, how do you think that that would be received by the, you know, those kids?" Nah, probably not. They worked it all the way through, and then they figured out their, themselves, how to melt those crayons and make new crayons. Granted, they had a key person in there who was in the Girl Scouts who knew that, but that worked it through, and then as a class, they sold those. It was really an interesting project. And that was a real, real-life, real-world problem.
I don't know what the criteria is, but I know some of you have been in my classroom, some of you know me. You're more than welcome to come into my classroom. Mr. Ambrose, was that his name?
Yeah.
He used to come in. He'd come in, walk the room, talk to me.
Sorry we took so much time, you guys wanna go home, apologize for that, we are excited about this.
Thank you very much.
Introducing me here, Dot. Hello, I'm Kalen Thompson, Assistant Principal at MRU, and I'm just gonna talk a little bit about what we've set in place so far this year for college and career readiness for our seniors. So the second week of September, right after the ad drop period, we set up, we started scheduling our school counselors to meet with all the seniors. And so in that check-in, it involved going over the seniors' current plan, what they want for help, what their next steps are, and then also, after those meetings, the counselors are calling home to connect with families about what was talked about in those meetings, and just seeing what they need for support. We are planning to proactively schedule 3 more check-ins throughout the school year with our seniors, but also seniors can connect with our counselors at any time if they need extra support. We're also hoping to do that similar sort of proactive approach of scheduling check-ins with juniors in the second semester, so that we can start that process early, figuring out what they need, and where they'd like to go to school, or what they're doing after, after high school. Also, we have a flex block on Wednesdays and Thursdays that we're trying to use as a way to connect with students. So we've used one flex block to do an introduction to the college essay. We have also had representatives sign up to come to the school from different colleges and universities, such as CCV, Castleton, UNH, University of Northern Vermont University, Hofstra, Regis, University of Maine at Farmington, University of Southern Maine, and Oberlin College right now are places that have signed up to connect with students. And so what we're doing during advisory is students are taking time to research those places, and then signing up if they're interested in connecting further. On September 21st, we had our first Life After High School event, where we invited juniors and seniors to come, and they could connect with Castleton representative, CCV, St. Michael's, Champlain, the Army National Guard, US Air Force, US Marine Corps, and some local businesses. On October 7th, we had a Fast Food Night for seniors. They could sign up and fill out financial aid applications with the support of guidance counselors. out, um, financial aid applications with the support of guidance counselors. Nate Hickey from Garrett showed up and Julie Finnegan from Upper Down showed up as well to help out with that. Last week, we had an irregular schedule for the PSATs. Um, so we use that time to have seniors attend different sessions on what they need. Um, so one of the sessions was, uh, just support on filling out the Common Application. Uh, Bryn Kennedy from Castleton came and, and supported with that. Um, we've had teacher support with the college essay. And then students who are focusing more on careers. Um, we had a specialist from the Vermont Department of Labor conducting some just conversations around the interview process along with talking about, uh, resumes. We have, um, Brad Rideout, who is sort of our career readiness counselor at MRU. And what he's been sort of focusing on in his role is giving, um, students information on job openings, helping them with essential skills they need to find jobs, um, meeting with students to help on applications, resume building, and the interview process. We're hoping to continue to make connections throughout the rest of the year, um, and, and bring in representatives from all different career paths, especially during that flex block time where kids have, um, a spot in their schedule where they can sign up and just to get a, a wider variety. And I think just as I get to know this community better, I will, you know, be finding out more ways to support when it comes to our college and career readiness after high school.
Have, have you come across, you know, seniors or juniors who hit that age and then suddenly realized, gee, I should have failed myself with Stafford?
Uh, you, like, like signed up to go to Stafford?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just wondering, you know, I mean, they get to be junior seniors and all of a sudden, wow, I have to think of something to do.
Yeah.
After I graduate. Now, what do I do?
Yeah, I, I haven't hit that yet, but there's a big push and we just scheduled, um, uh, with Stafford that they're gonna come and present to all of our sophomores and then fill out, uh, and take a trip over to Stafford. Um, and they really push that all sophomores participate in that so that they're aware of what's offered. And I actually just, um, spent some time over at Stafford looking at the facilities and talking with their counselors and things like that. But no, not yet. That hasn't come up.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, because there, at Stafford, I'm the rep from, from this board.
Yeah.
And they're, they're talking about trying to expand their, their presence in, in all of the sending schools.
Yeah.
You know, they're working out that, how they're gonna do that. But starting even as early as, you know, seventh, eighth grade and, and maybe having some kind of a tech academy, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
And, and working with our school more closely and all the, all the sending schools.
Yeah.
To really be able to use that as a resource so that kids don't get to be seniors and going, you know, you know, "I'd like to go into plumbing. I'd like to go into being an electrical, you know, an electrician. Oh, wow, I could have been doing that for two years and had a heads up."
Yeah, I-
If I'd really been paying attention.
I completely agree with that. And I think, I was so impressed with the facilities over there and what they had to offer. And it's, it's interesting you brought that up because I just came back from that. Um, and I was glad to have had that opportunity because now I can speak truer to it as kids approach, um, with sort of figuring out what they wanna do. Um, but that's definitely something I can continue to sort of connect with Stafford about, not just sophomores, but younger ages.
You think they're gonna have some outreach?
You think they're gonna have some outreach to me? So that was just, you're just prepping me for it.
Art, did you have a quick question?
Yes, I just had a question. Um, do you engage the Vermont National Guard to come in and, and, uh, make a presentation to the students?
I haven't yet, no. Uh, they did, the Arm, the, the Army National Guard was at our Life After High School. And so I did reach out to them, um, initially. And so they set up a table for that on the 21st.
Oh, they, they have a table set up?
Well, they did on the 21st.
They did?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So you did have, thank you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
And I, I appreciate that, that we're being more proactive on this.
Oh, I appreciate.
Jody, is that the, the 12th grade end?
That is what we have for you for tonight.
Thank you very much. That was, some of it was more highly entertaining than others, but you were all great. Thank you. I enjoyed it anyway. Uh, let's see. We are down to student board member recruitment update. I'm assuming that's Tyler, what?
Do you mind if we just take a?
Oh, I'm sorry. Five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
I appreciate whenever anybody says that, because I just keep going. We're back to the school, the student school board member before Tyler got interrupted and got to go sit down.
It's okay. I don't have a huge update for you, other than every single one of you are gonna receive an invite tomorrow for our flex block next Thursday to come talk to kids about being on, on the school board, if you can make it. Our flex block is 12:42 to 1, uh, 1:30 roughly.
And what day is that?
Thursday, the 28th. Um, the only reason I had such a delay was, uh, last week we had PSATs. We only have flex block on Wednesday and Thursday. Flex, I was at a VSA class on Thursday. This coming Wednesday, we're at a conference. Next Monday, so, yep. So, uh, we will plan on Thursday and I will have probably two, I'll call the high school in groups of 9, 10, 11, 12, and, uh, have a conversation with them.
So who can, who could go to that? That was my next question.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'll be teaching at that time. Sorry. I don't know what I'm doing next week.
What Thursday is that?
Uh, the 28th.
Next Thursday.
Yeah.
Next Thursday.
I can do.
Okay, okay.
And I'm right at home.
Yep.
I can join, go meet.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
I can project you up, uh, up onto this stage. Yep.
I could come up at this point.
Yeah, we can do that. Cause up and meet and by all means, you can talk to them that way.
I could also join on, on the meet.
Okay.
Make the commute, plus the meeting.
Yeah. That's fine. Like, that's easy.
I'm two minutes away, so I can just pop down.
Okay. So I'll, I'll put an invite out to everyone and just feel free to, uh, you know, accept if you can, virtually or in person. And, uh, we'll plan to have the, the groups then.
Lockdown.
Okay.
Yeah, lockdown.
I'll pick you up on the way.
Did you get any, you know, any feedback from, you know, like the kids, like, I know you said you were starting student government back up.
Yeah, not really. Nothing so much yet. Uh, it's, it's, I don't know. It's interesting. You know, we, uh, over homecoming weekend, you know, our, uh, our senior class arranged for a, uh, car wash for a fundraiser and no one showed up.
At all?
To work it. Our advisor did. They did one car. Jojo Valentes.
That's terrible.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, and we're having this issue with, with yearbook as well right now. You know, we have our kids, uh, last year I considered maybe not doing a yearbook, uh, just because of social media and kids are not really accessing that really, that information as much anymore. I got a huge amount, uh, pushback from the kids saying, "No, we want to have this. We have to have a yearbook. We have a yearbook class." And every day, Mrs. LaRoe comes in and goes, "You need to come in and put a fire under them. They're just not doing it." So, you know, it's a work in progress. We're getting there.
What does she mean by they're not doing it?
Uh, you know, the, the company we deal with, Jostens, has certain deadlines. We have to meet certain pages, have to be done by a certain amount of time. And, uh, we have six students in the class and it's just, eh, a certain level of apathy, of a, a certain level of, you know, "If we don't do this, the teacher's gonna do it." And I've already talked to Mrs. LaRoe and the capacity's not there to do that. You know, this is supposed to be a student-run thing. Of course, we're there to help them and get pictures for them and what have you, but, you know, this is a student-run yearbook. So, uh, I have found myself going in with the Jostens rep and Mrs. LaRoe to that class and saying, "Hey, you know, if you want a yearbook, this is for you to do."
Right.
So.
Well, that's unfortunate.
It is a little bit. I mean, but then again, it's also a little bit of the sign of the times, you know?
And it's not just here, too.
No, it isn't. It isn't just here.
I think that's important to say that.
No, no, I think you're right.
No.
And yearbooks just aren't what they were.
They're not as popular. I mean, the, the book we ordered last year was 116 pages and we ordered 160 copies. Right now, we're looking at a 100-page book this year and 100 copies. You know, every year it's progressively gone down in size and also in, in copies ordered. Uh, but I mean, it's nice to know that our target goal is 100, 100 books. And , uh, the deadline for the lowest price is, I believe, this Friday, which is $55. We have 27 books sold. So it's not terrible. It's about a quarter of our goal, low over a quarter. Um, but they can buy books all the way until, I believe, March, March 1st. So, and it's on the announcements all the time and, you know, so we're, we're getting there.
I mean, they could also do something, you know, just self-bound and-
They could.
You know, if they don't get it together, they could produce something.
Well, yeah, we will have something, you know, but depending what that looks like, we're not exactly sure. You know, and there's been conversations down the line of doing a digital yearbook down the line. Something that could be accessed by anyone and, you know, probably for a relatively cheaper price.
Sure.
Yeah, if not any price at all.
I heard a couple weeks ago, three weeks ago, one of the bathrooms was trashed here. What's, what can you tell me about that? Was it solved? Did you, was it part of TikTok thing? Was it?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we are seeing an uptick in some vandalism of the school. Uh, part of it was, the September TikTok challenge was vandalize the school. Uh, and it's, again, not just us. We're seeing this across the board in, uh, all schools. Uh, it's been Vermont Digger. I know I've seen articles about it. Uh, and, uh, my, my, my daughter's school's, Rhode Island Town School, not so much the bathrooms, but, uh, stuff, stuff was stolen off of teachers' desks or taken or, you know, vandalized in teachers' rooms. So it's, it's really not, I had a conversation with their athletic director, Mike Rowe, at one of my daughter's soccer's game. And he said, "Has this hit you yet?" And yeah, it has. Um, and we're seeing an uptick in it. And that's why we are definitely being a little more thoughtful in our supervision of kids and changing, or, um, class-changing times and unsupervised, not unsupervised time, but time where kids are out in the halls and what have you and not in class time. Um, that is definitely a focus of ours and, uh, we're working to fix that. But unfortunately, well, let's put it this way, we're not gonna put cameras in the bathroom. You really can't do that. Um, we have cameras outside our bathrooms and we can make a best guess by when kids go in and say, "Hey, something was happening here," or an adult goes in there. We do have, um, uh, what do I wanna say? We have, uh, sweeps, if you will. We have teachers that are assigned and we ask, you know, "If you have a free block, please, in your movement about the building, go into the bathrooms, take a look, walk in, walk out," um, that kind of thing. So, I mean, we're definitely being proactive with it, but it's also somewhat reactive because, again, we're not gonna have a bathroom attendant in the, you know, in every bathroom. It's not possible.
And just to be clear, the same sex going in the bathrooms?
Yes.
Want to make that out there?
Yes.
That's not a teacher walking in the bathroom.
Yeah, same sex or, uh, same genders going into the, uh, the bathrooms, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions on anything? Sorry, I know we went a little bit off topic, but it's okay.
It's a shame about this.
It really, you know, it really is. And I've had conversations with kids, um, and it is amazing, once you kind of put it out there, they do come together by saying, you know, "This is inappropriate." You know, I've had seniors talk to kids at lunch and say, "You know, this is, whatever you're doing is hurting all of us." You know, it, it's, it's taking money away from, to repair these things from what we could be spending on, you know, educational goals. Uh, it is unfortunate. It really is. But, you know, it's, uh, like I said before, it's, uh, we're seeing an uptick in, in that and we're not the only ones.
Okay, well, next we have Dave.
No problem. And I'll, I'll send him, I'll, I'll invite out to you tomorrow. Thank you.
And you'll send, uh, like a, a Google Meet or whatever?
Yeah, there'll be a link inside that, uh, that meet.
We have the COVID dynamics update. And Jody, you said you were gonna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Doing it on the fly, so bear with me. Um, so not much new to report as far as how we are working with kids. We are still, uh, having students wear masks. Um, we're still taking precautions wherever we can, especially when kids are removing them to eat. Um, we are continuing to work with the Department of Health if we ever need to regarding a case and just plugging along in this new normal. Um, overall, very pleased with the amount of education in person our students have been able to get so far this year and hopeful that that continues. Um, I can say as a mom of littles, I am very much looking forward to the five to 11 crowd coming up soon and will be marching my own as soon as I can, um, into the doctor's office. Um, I wanted to touch very briefly on the, um, the adult employee vaccine information request. So I just wanted to say, um, that this is coming from a, an agreement between MRU USD and the MRUEA. So that's the union is working in conjunction with the district. Um, the union did poll its members and then worked collaboratively with the district to decide on this procedure. It is likely that a federal mandate, um, for businesses and, and organizations over 100 people will come soon in November and December. And Mill River really feels it's important to be proactive and to set things up, um, as clearly as we possibly can. At this stage, those who, who do not feel comfortable uploading proof of vaccination will have to intermittently test. I just do wanna speak to that because having children in another school and being in five schools, I test quite a bit, even though I'm vaccinated. And so I can say from personal experience that you can go on the Department of Health's website and you can set up non-symptomatic, no-cost tests through that website. Um, and it's very easy to do.
Thank you. Okay. Could you, um, maybe make that known to the teaching staff across the district?
Yes.
Because obviously they don't know.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, um, we have the bylaws review process recommendations. And I don't know, I, I don't think anybody's here to speak to that because Dave was going to. Um, so could we table that? Is that okay with everybody?
So moved.
Thank you. I was just gonna do it by consensus, but yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. And now we are board meeting structure discussion and elementary school visits. I'm not really sure where we wanna go with this. Um, I know there was conversation that we really wanted to keep meeting in other schools, but I also don't know when we wanted to start it. BJ, you were a very vocal supporter. I mean, I am too.
Yeah.
I'm just not sure what the, what's the, the, the board feeling on, on, we're trying to still, we, we have to, um, talk about goals discussions and trying to do that. I mean, I was gonna do that under the agenda building, but we could address that here too. Maybe that's a better point in the meeting to talk about that.
My thought with the winter and stuff coming, and I know that we still need to talk about if we're doing a hybrid or not hybrid to, so Brian has time to prepare. Can we maybe push it, like to next meeting so that way we can clear?
Okay.
If we're doing like hybrid or not hybrid, then we can?
I guess that's a question Brian, we can ask you, and I know we probably asked you last time and we've all forgotten. Um, how much more, if we set up like one meeting a month where it was going to be a mostly hybrid or mostly virtual with just a small hybrid component? Because we were talking about it being wintertime and, and maybe not wanting to come down as often, or if there was a snowstorm or whatever. I know you can't just do it on the fly, nor does anybody necessarily wanna come down and be the person here.
Yep.
Um, that you'd have to have to comply with open meeting.
If you've planned it in advance, I don't see any, any issues. Just having lead time and I think, so, so board members know and, and can be in the right place at the right time so that our staff can do the same. And I think so the public can because I, I, my, my big concern is somebody's gonna miss the note if something changes. So if it's been planned in advance and warned that way, uh, I'm comfortable with, you know, if you're thinking about, hey, we'll do one hybrid and then one in-person each month, I think that would work.
What do, what do people think about that? Cause I mean, you'd need a, a week or so in warning, right, Brian?
Yeah, how long do you need for planning?
You know, I mean, it'd be better, obviously, if we just said the second meeting or whatever. But if that's not how we're gonna-
Yeah, and I, I wonder, what, how would the-
Or peg TV, too.
Am I, am I exaggerating in thinking that the public might get frustrated if things flip back and forth a lot or last minute or?
I don't understand why we need a hybrid at all. You're all here. We're here. What's the problem?
I, I do think we've had some public who have, who have expressed that they wish they could, could join. Uh, I took a phone call actually with one person who was talking about how they would appreciate hybrid, but-
Some of it's because people don't wanna wear masks and they would prefer to have a hybrid, um, component. Well, we're trying to be responsive.
Yeah.
You know?
And if, I guess really my question is, if the, how far in advance would you like to know how the meeting's gonna happen? For it to be reasonable and not confuse people?
So, so does hybrid mean no one will be here?
No, uh, you can have in-person people. So you could join in-person or you could go online if it's hybrid.
That's what they mean by hybrid as opposed to virtual or in-person.
So in this room, we're all in-person.
But the board's all gonna be there.
Not necessarily.
No, not necessarily. We would have, there's, there's a, a setup for, for a hybrid meeting in the conference room over there where there's a big screen. So you would be able to see board members. You wouldn't have to sit in front of a computer on your own. You would just sit in that room.
My feeling is you lose something when the board isn't here, when there's not that back and forth. I, to me, if you wanna have hybrid, you know, the people can, are watching it now, right? I mean, they can watch it on YouTube.
I think the-
So, I mean, for the people.
I think folks are wishing that they could interact more and not just watch.
Well, can they, can you set up something where they would interact with the board's all here?
Uh, that would be up to the board because everything we've discussed so far-
I'm just giving you one guy's.
Well, there's, there's also-
Sure, sure. No, I appreciate it.
Yeah, there's also concerns with people on the board that have small children or children that are home by themselves. Um, there's people on the board that are over 60 years old whose eyes aren't getting that much better and aren't terribly thrilled about driving. To me, I'm not talking about anybody else. Don't look at that.
Me too, for that matter.
You know, I mean, I, I wouldn't mind not having to go out as many times in the evening as I have to. Um, and if it's, if it's possible to do, I, I think that it's something we need to at least discuss.
It's possible. Just do virtual and never show up at all. I sort of think we need to be here. I mean-
I haven't missed a meeting other than one in the last year.
I'm not, I'm not saying you have. Nobody's making any accusations.
No, but I'm saying, I don't think it's me...
I'm just saying, I think we need to be here when the people are out there.
Okay, well...
Unless there's a snowstorm or some, some dramatic reason we shouldn't be here.
Well, I mean, then we wouldn't have a meeting because we can't just call a hybrid meeting because it's snowing unless we have a big, big, you know, warning of that. But, but there's other people.
I know, we had, um, I want to thank Brian for the conversation that we had, I believe it was last meeting, where you answered a lot of the questions that I know are, are coming up today. Um, and, um, you know, are, there's a lot there too, if you'd like to, to take a look at, at the last meeting. And again, Brian laid out, I think, the technical challenges and I think the ideal technical scenarios versus not. And I, I do remember you saying that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, that if we are, let's say that we have those one or two or three people who, for whatever reason, are going to be having that trouble in the winter or whatever it is, the reasons that people have requested. You said though, that it would work better if it were about a 50-50 split, just because of logistics. Can you explain that again, just super briefly?
Yeah, absolutely. If you've got, if you've got one person remote, I think going hybrid gets kind of awkward because then we're all squeezed in a smaller room. We've got one person on a big screen. Um, if one person's got to be remote last minute for some reason, I'd say call in on the phone. And the logistics are, are simpler because we keep this space, we do things as normal, we don't change warnings, uh, we just dial somebody in. If you've got, if you've got all but one person on the board that's going to be virtual, I, I think then you've got one board member in the room, you've got a bunch of faces on the screen, and I think it, it, it becomes less effective for the one person in the room to try and juggle everybody trying to talk on the screen. So, to be able to have, if you've got five people in there, in person, and maybe five people remote, then the board chair can manage the conversation, I think, for, for both sides a little more easily. Where if it's the board chair and everybody on the screen, then that's a lot of logistics you're asking Adrian to try and pull off, uh, if that makes sense. So, I think hybrid really makes sense if you have a need for that kind of half and half. If it's one person, I wouldn't do it. If it's all but one person, I think that's a good reason to think about the meeting just being virtual. Um, I know all, all those options have pros and cons, but... Did that, did that answer your question?
Yeah, that, that was helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
I have Christine, Christine?
I just, I just wanted to say that it may open up more people that would want to be on the board if they could be virtual. But I get what Art's saying because the conversation's richer when everybody's together because it's the body language. It's the, it's everything. So, I know that's no opinion, I'm either one. It's not really an opinion.
You gave pros and cons, yeah, but it's more information.
I, I agree with Art in the sense that I think it's richer. The conversation is more authentic, but I think it could open up board members to join and public to be more active if there is that hybrid component.
I mean, we had many more people watching and, and, you know, participating when we were completely virtual. It was shocking.
Adrian, I'll make a, I feel comfortable making a, I don't know if I want to make a motion, but a suggestion.
You can make a motion, go ahead.
I don't know if we're at that point yet, but I'll...
Well, I mean, we would continue the conversation.
Sure. Okay, yeah, sure, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for us to operate, um, fully on a hybrid model between the months of January and April. Um, we will continue to operate as we currently are until January. January through April, we operate on a hybrid model. April, and this is only through this COVID period. I don't think this should be a long-term, uh, thing every winter. I think we have multiple challenges that people have presented. And once we return, uh, whatever point in April or May 1, then we do school visits and have meetings that way.
That's, because then we still have May to August of the kids in session too. Well, well, May, you...
Well, May, May through December.
Oh, sorry.
May, May through December. So, there's, there's a portion where they are in, in school, but then we're also still hitting, uh, those community, we're arriving in those communities in...
Towards the end of the year.
In the summer as, as well. I mean, it's, it's really eight months where we are then they're active in the community so that we have increased accessibility.
Yep.
And that eight months completely in person.
You'd have, you'd have May, June, October, November, December to easily visit schools.
Do we need a second before we discuss this?
Excuse me?
All right, can we just go, can we just second it and discuss?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't hear a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, now we can have a discussion. Oh, yeah. Thank you, Maria. Yep.
Thank you.
I actually, I would prefer not to do that one. I'd rather have a very consistent schedule for the remainder of the year. Um, I can't tell you how much I got out of just being in the school, elementary school buildings, and I know there's been several new ones. I mean, Asha, have you been in all the schools that you represent?
No, I have not.
I don't, I think I've only ever been in Clarendon in this room here.
Adrian, Bruce, I mean Bruce?
I think...
And that's something I think is immensely important, that we are physically in these buildings that we represent, and I want to get back to that sooner or later. Um, I'm also someone that thought there was a lot of benefit that came out of us when we were remote and meeting. I mean, there's some stuff that we missed just by talking there, but I think the community engagement increased when we did that. Uh, my proposal, what I would love to see is, you know, we have two meetings a month. Maybe the first meeting is a hybrid meeting, um, in the other room, and then the second meeting is a rotational thing between all the schools. If it's bad weather, we don't go to the school. That, that's, that's just something we can call plain and simple, simple. Um, but, uh, to me, that would give us both, both of the worlds. It would give some really consistency. Because I know I'm going to get confused. Is it, okay, is it this month for this, is it that month for that? So, that's, I'm leaning more to hybrid and then in the buildings and consistent.
So, then would we do our working meeting? We just have to pick which, if it's the hybrid meeting or if it's the trap that we have the working, or are we...
I think that's, that's another discussion.
Eventually discussing, yeah, okay, discussing that.
Len had brought that up too. So, that's a second, second piece to this conversation.
Good question.
That's part of it. Um, I actually like the idea of January, maybe January through March, I don't know. I'm hopeful that April will be spring.
Not in Shrewsbury, right?
No.
Well, I was going to say.
No, you still have to get off the mountain. I get it. But, um, you know, that would leave us November and December to start school visits and then start them back up in April, May and June. We'd get to visit all the schools this school year if we did that, that schedule. I don't, I don't know whether, um, I'm comfortable making every month being a hybrid meeting. I don't, it, but I don't have kids at home anymore, so...
Well, okay, so I have a comment to that.
I mean, that makes it harder.
When you run, my child's sitting at home by himself.
I know, it makes it harder.
You know, um, but when you run for a position on the school board, you also know what the schedule looks like. So, you take into consideration that you have kids at home, if you have kids, and do you have help? So, there's also that. I mean, I knew it when I started, and I'm a single mom, but I knew it, you know?
You don't always quite know it, though.
No, 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 I know, I know. No, I knew that.
Intellectually, yes, but you don't know how your child's going to react to it, that kind of...
No, yeah. But you know what it looks like to be on a board, kind of when you're running and you're trying to be on the board, so...
If I could add to that, I know, I really appreciate, uh, Christine, I, I really appreciated what you said about accessibility and maybe of what a, of what this hybrid format could allow, um, in terms of more people who might be able to run for positions. Um, I think that's certainly something that should be important to us, is, is making sure that there is accessibility to these positions. But at the same time, I feel, to your point, Andrea, that we, it was explicitly clear when we joined this board, whether it's COVID or not.
Yep.
We know that we have responsibility and to, to, to be here and to fulfill all of that. Now, again, I think that COVID adds in layers. I appreciate what was said about people who might feel, you know, that they can communicate more freely without the masks if they are in that, that online forum. Um, but I just, I want to make that very clear. And I would hope that if we do choose this hybrid model, that that's something that we can work on really communicating to the community. I think that's very important, that we make it clear why we would be doing this and not that it's simply a way for us because we don't feel like driving or we don't feel...
Feel like being there.
And I, I'm not, I'm not, again, I'm not saying that, that anyone is coming with that in mind, but, um, that this would be here as this solution to promote accessibility the way I see it, per my motion, in the short term and not as, but, you know, obviously I've been to other perspectives.
My opinion is that, uh, I'm very much in favor of staying in-person, not going remote. Um, it's very easy to hide behind a computer screen on a remote setting. People can't really see what you're doing, you can turn your cameras off, you know, there's, there's all these different elements. Um, in my opinion, you know, COVID's been going on for a year and a half now. We all know what our comfort levels are and how to keep ourselves safe. And, uh, I feel we owe to the people to be here in-person, but that's just my opinion. So...
Maria?
I hear the value of having us in-person with each other. I really, I appreciate that. I try to take advantage of it when I can. I also, when we were fully remote and we were having those, the Google meetings, I felt like we had a really impressive amount of participation in our meetings, in public comment, and, um, and it was accessible. And so, when we were talking about, when I was talking to people about running for school board back in the winter, I was talking to people who did have very small children and people who would have access to this and be able to take part. Yes, traditionally, the board all shows up and sits at tables together, but things are changing right now and, and there's been a lot of talk of like, like, I don't know, going back to, like, I can't, I can't think of the words, I'm really tired right now, but how to get back what we had before. Like, maybe some of the things, we don't want to get back what we had before. Maybe we've learned some things and we can apply them now. And I think doing hybrid might get a little tricky because we'd have to figure out if we really do want to have it 50-50. Like, those of us who live in the valley are probably the ones who are going to need to be the ones who show up and need to commit to that. Um, and maybe give a more of a pass to the people in the mountains, and we can work that out. But I think it would be worth trying for three months. We went, we went through a year where we did it completely remotely and we got some stuff done. So, I, I support this.
Doug?
I'm with Matt. I, I think it's a, it's a vote you in, we need to talk to you type stuff. Uh, I understand, um, the virus side of things because it's, uh, it's still running and it's starting to get bigger and stuff, and we don't need any of that, but it's going to happen to be there. But I would, uh, I'll take anything that comes along. Not a problem.
Bruce, did you want to add?
No, I think we need to be here. I like to talk with people. But bother me, virtual, we kept saying, I wish, I can't wait to get back in-person. And now, I think, I can see the slippery slope. Maybe not this year, and I think it'll continue. Once we do it, it'll continue. And it's going to be easy when you come home from work to say, I think I'll just stay home tonight, or I got something to do. I can do that while I'm, while I'm watching the meeting. And I don't think you'd be giving full, full focus to the meeting. So, I, I think we need to be here. That's just me.
So, uh, Brian, if we cannot, if we do not do the hybrid, like, being in the conference room, how many people can call in that need to be?
Really only one, right?
Is it really?
You, you could conference call, but I, I think it would start getting messy once you have two people.
Okay.
I just think it, it, you could do it. But again, logistically, then, then you've got two people who aren't going to be able to read...
Can you mic a laptop?
What's that?
Can you mic a laptop?
Uh, we could start having people come in on laptops, but if we start having people come in on laptops, hybrid's a better option. Is that, you see where I'm going?
I do.
Um, we could do that. But the more laptops you get, the messier it gets, and that's why that setups.
No, but if you had two people?
Yeah, if you had two, you could. Yep, yep.
Okay, I just didn't, like, capacity on the line.
Yeah, no, I get it.
You know?
Yep.
If it's two people, can, why can't, can we just have two people call in?
Yeah.
You know, and then we don't have to worry about...
Yeah.
Moving everything.
Yep, you could do that.
Another thing that was hard, I, I went to a few long for its like board meetings over the winter and they had, it was Zoom, and so they would have one Zoom account for the people doing that, and you couldn't see them. So, I could never tell who was talking. And that's the problem when you have people, lots of people calling in.
Clarendon.
To remember to identify who's speaking, it's hard once we get rolling to do that.
And to, to get their, their feedback because if they're just on the phone, there's no hand to raise or, you know, they have to interrupt basically, or you have to remember to ask.
Yep.
During every, you know, I mean, which you should do, but it, it inhibits back and forth certainly.
Oh, okay.
Len?
Nope, I haven't. Um... Well, because, I, I, I have two sides to the story. One, I really think we should be in-person. That's, that's number one. But I also, speaking for myself, also understand that come March and April, I'm not going to be here. Um, and certainly, when we were on the computers, I could be anywhere and still participate, and I liked that part of it. Um, so I'm kind of torn, to be very honest. But I also understand what, what Brian's saying in that, and, uh, in the past years, I have actually called in, um, to participate in the meeting when I wasn't here in town. So, I, I just think being here like we are now is a much better way to go. That's just my opinion.
Until you go to South Carolina. I get it. I thought it worked well when you called in because you were the only one.
Yes.
So, it, it worked fine. But if, if more people want to avail themselves of it, it becomes...
More people want to come to South Carolina, it's going to be bad.
Well, I mean...
Then we'll go hybrid.
Yeah, I have to admit.
So, we can all be in South Carolina.
Well, we have a, um...
A motion.
Motion on the table. Um, I don't know if, would you be willing to, to maybe have it due January to March? Would you be willing to change your...
Oh, absolutely. Um, I only said April because I knew about Len's schedule. I'm fine with, with it. And not to say with the Len that I built my motion around you, I did not. Um, I did not. Um, I'm, I'm fine with January, yes. I want to make that very clear. Um, January through March is, is, yeah, I'm happy to, to amend that, yeah.
So, three months, the three winter months.
Well, and, and the other part of that is you have elections in March. And so, I think it's really important.
That's true, the first meeting in March is...
Yeah, because your restructuring meeting.
Well, could not really needs to...
No, we did it virtually this year. I mean, again, I, I, I made my motion in regards to this being a temporary solution for as long as, as masks are. I mean, who knows? We could find ourselves in an excellent situation.
By March.
By March and, you know, of course, we'll hope for the best.
Maria, are you okay if we vote January to March instead of April?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I know, but you seconded it, so I'm trying to do the right thing here before I get caught on something. Um, okay, are there any other comments? Because we'll just take a vote then because I'm pretty much assuming what it'll be. So, what we're voting on is a hybrid schedule from January to March and visiting schools as part of that at least once a year, November, December, April, May, June, you know, and the other months, and October, sorry.
Because you only need four.
Right, but you might want to do it more than once.
Yes, no.
But, um, so that's the motion if, if I, so...
Five, five was here, this building.
Well, we sort of are always here. So, that's the motion on the table. January through March as hybrid and then, um, making sure that we visit all the schools at least once a year in the intervening months. And I will call that question. Please, um, raise your hand if you support the motion. So, we have five in favor. If you do not support the motion, please raise your hand. Which did you vote for, Len?
I didn't.
He took his hand down after.
I didn't, I put my hand down.
No, on the first one.
I didn't.
Oh, I had counted you, I looked over and counted you.
No, I did not.
Did you have an itch?
Oh, good lord. Okay, so the motion is defeated.
Can I throw something out real quick? Since that's over? Just something that popped into my head. If folks are really seeing a huge need for in-person, but we want to provide accessibility, I wonder if there's a way you could come up with a time that's a full board member get-together that's virtual, but there's no action planned? And you could, you know, work something like that into your schedule. I know there's the community-
You have community conversations.
But I wonder if, I wonder if folks might want to talk to all the board members sometimes? I don't know. Just a thought, if there's that need, that maybe there's another path if folks do feel like we need to be in-person to provide that accessibility.
We can always invite all, everybody to-
Not sure I understood what you were suggesting.
The engagement one.
You mean a third meeting?
Or, like, you've restructured a little bit to do board goal conversations at some meetings? Maybe restructure the meetings so that every once in a while there's a full virtual meeting with everybody, but there's no action? Just to get more people to come to the table and comment that maybe we're not getting now?
I think we'd have to, I'm not absolutely sure that complies with open meeting law.
Oh, oh, we can't do full virtual? Well, can we do, when I say full virtual, can we have a space for the public to gather? Or is that off the table now?
Well, some, the public can, yeah, no, that's okay, but somebody has to be here. But it could be anybody.
We'd have, yeah, we did that before and Doug was here.
Right.
Yep.
Right, or who, I mean, you were-
Ann and I were here too, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that, that works. So we could do that.
Just a thought, because if there were that many people participating remotely, you know?
Can I throw something out there? Can we try one hybrid meeting? Plan one hybrid meeting? Because I'm almost at the point where, like, I want to-
How about a committee meeting first? You want to do a committee meeting?
Well, that's actually a second conversation I was about to bring up, is I really would like a more permanent computer and video camera setup there so I can bring in people during the community time. So I'm considering what the school board meeting and the community meetings is, like, almost two separate conversations. So I want to come back to that.
Are you referring to, are you referring to committee meetings or?
Committee meetings, yeah, committee meetings, not committee. The committee meetings and the school board ones, I'm having, I want to have two separate conversations on. But for a school board meeting, I would like to at least maybe try one in November just to see what it's like before I commit to several months or anything like that.
I think, I mean, personally, I think that's a reasonable decision. If we wanted to try maybe the second meeting in November as a hybrid setup just to see what it's like, what is the feeling on that? I think it would be better to try, personally, a whole meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, not a committee meeting.
Not a-
No, that's what I'm talking about. A full, one of the meetings in November is set up exactly like hybrid.
Motion.
I'm gonna make a motion that one of our meetings in November is a hybrid meeting.
I second that. Okay, conversation is open, does anybody have-
First or second, I would suggest a second.
Yeah, I would too.
I would too.
It's just harder to get together.
Only because, again, because I have personnel on the first of November.
Second meeting, I'm gonna amend mine. Did we ever get a second?
I second.
Okay, second.
November the 17th.
I will amend it to be the second meeting in November as a hybrid meeting.
Anybody else, otherwise I'll call the question.
Which will be November 17th? For a date.
Yes.
Just one consideration on that. I wonder if we, if we might, I think we'll have to coordinate to ensure which people are, to ensure that we'll have that fairly equal split per Brian's suggestion. So, just that, putting that out there as a consideration.
Absolutely, and we have another meeting.
Or who's gonna be here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, both.
That it's not Doug all the time.
Why not?
Unless you want to get out of the house.
I don't know, I got a house full of kids, normally there's three grandkids in there now, but it's hard when you're at the table and it's the kitchen here and the living room there, and the TV's on, or the phone's ringing and stuff. It's easier for me to be here, and nobody else came in. It was just the three of us, myself and Ann and this guy.
I've been called worse.
Poor Brian.
You got it.
Is there any further discussion of, okay, then I'll call the question. Are we in favor of trying a hybrid meeting, the second meeting in November, to see if it's something that we want to continue talking about or whether we just want to throw it off the table because it doesn't work? All in favor, please raise your hand. Six, okay, and those not in favor, please raise your hand. Doug, did you vote?
Yeah, I would.
Oh, okay, I didn't see you, I'm sorry. Okay, so that passed. So the November 17th meeting will be a hybrid setup, which means that people will be able to be here live, but it will be in the other room, and some of the board will be on the screen, and some people will be in-person, and we will see how that works. Do we also want to pin down a little bit more on whether we want to go to another school? Say, the first, I think December might be a bad month to start it. I mean, just because there's a lot of stuff going on in the schools.
If you leave it up to me, I would say our next meeting would start the rotation, but that's leaving it up to me, because I miss seeing, I like being in the buildings that I represent.
What is that date? Or no, the 3rd of November. I mean, that's plenty of time to be able to move the meeting.
Yeah, but I would be in favor of that.
Okay, I guess it'll be, is that pretty much by consensus? We're happy with the next meeting being at one of the schools? Do we have a preference? Does anybody have a preference on which school to go to? Or we'll just, I can put out there, have Dave ask the-
Let's get Shrewsbury out of the way before the snow comes.
Yes.
Well, Tim is not in there. I don't know why everybody always picks on Shrewsbury. How about we leave it to the administrators to decide who wants to be first and what's going on in their building? Is that okay? Okay, so we'll leave it to Dave to canvas the building principles and see where we're gonna be. And so, check your agenda before you show up for the next meeting, please.
The 3rd?
Yes, because if you come here, you won't have much company, and you won't have a hybrid setup either.
No, I'm just trying to, when we ask the administration in the buildings,
We have committee meetings.
We're gonna have to be there at 6, not 7.
To meet for personnel?
Right.
Right.
But just so that they know that, that's all.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, all right.
Because they, if they're planning on us showing up at 7, and I have personnel at 6.
That would be tough. I remember having meetings in one of the Timmouth classrooms.
No, I have no problem with having it someplace else.
As much as I'm for this, I have one argument for waiting one extra month.
Okay.
I was gonna ask if we can get a presentation from them.
For the next meeting?
Kristen's meeting. I've been looking in that room and seeing what Kristen's doing. I've been wanting to see what, I wanted to talk to those students, everything so badly.
Karen?
Karen, yeah.
Okay.
BJ, I just want to point out that is not, so they're using this space, but it is not solely a Mill River group.
No, it's the whole robotics team, right?
Yes, so I don't know if, because it's not solely Mill River, if that complicates it or not.
I don't know, I just would love to talk to, just check out what they're doing as a-
I think they'd be happy to see us.
But that would be, that would be my one argument for waiting until November, December to start the rotation.
Okay!
But that's only if that would exist. If not, I would definitely want to start November 3rd, if that makes sense.
It's getting very complicated. How about everybody stay tuned to your next agenda and you'll all be surprised? Okay, all right.
Got commercial.
So, November 3rd. Ann, did you get that?
I think so, yes.
I'm glad, because it was-
None of us did.
Yeah, even.
You can tell us.
Or-
You can T P you later.
So we would like to, or we're gonna look at Legos.
Yeah, one of those do that.
Okay, all right. And, I don't know if, while we're already, see, what else? Why don't we get some more stuff out of the way before we start the conversation on school's time? The next thing on the agenda is the V-Hi Visbit VSBA representative designation, and I put that on there. The VSBA is the Vermont School Boards Association. I'm on the Vermont School Boards Association Board. So I'm volunteering to go, but I don't mind if anybody else would rather. It's gonna be a virtual meeting, it's their annual meeting. That's on the 4th and the 5th of November. So it's, you know, you're not going anywhere. Unfortunately, it's not like more this year, because that's sort of fun. But to do that, that would mean that you are being the voting delegate for the votes on the VSBA resolutions and on bylaw amendments. And we're gonna address that next on the direction that we're gonna go on those. I sent them to everybody. So, is anybody else interested in being that voting member? Because I'm not gonna be unhappy, I'm still gonna go to the meeting anyway. Nobody is volunteering?
I cannot.
I can't make a motion to make myself the designated person. If someone else would like to do that.
Make the motion.
We designate Andrea.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I mean, not Andrea, I'm so sorry, Andrea, Adrian.
I've been called Andrea many times in my life, so it's not a big, I didn't even notice, to tell you the truth. Sorry. Does anybody have any other, any other, okay. I'm just gonna call the question. Are we appointing me to be the V-Hi Visbit and VSBA rep for voting on bylaws and represented in the V-Hi? Okay, thank you. Now, did everybody read the resolutions and the bylaws amendments that are coming up? Because I obviously have my own opinions on these, but I would, I'll vote our board instructions. Where is the, heavens? Okay. Did anybody have anything that stuck out to them? That they wanted, that they had a firm opinion on, that they wanted to vote in a specific way? I think I am trying to find the- Okay. I give up.
It was sent two days ago. Info for Wednesday night meetings, that's subject matter.
Oh, there we go. Who was it? It's great, I even sent it and I forgot what I labeled it. Okay, so we have to talk about the resolution submitted by Addison Northwest. And basically, it's objecting to the financial software system that everybody's been forced to use. And the final statement is, be it resolved that the VSBA uses its influence to support district business and finance managers, superintendents, and school boards by advocating to the legislature and agency of education that any and all current plans for a single statewide accounting software system be abandoned. It's that bad in some districts. So I don't know if anyone has a, you know, a strong, the VSBA committee was hoping that was gonna pass as a regular resolution. And that means, the VSBA is basically a lobbying group. I mean, they offer help, I mean, they came and did the, Sue Seglowski came and did the open meeting law presentation for us. They are a resource for questions on, you know, how other districts are doing things. They carry a database on negotiations. They have all sorts of, you know, they do policy, policy work and design policies for school boards to use. They're a pretty powerful organization. And they run their legislative advocacy based on the resolutions that members vote on at the annual meeting. So do we have a problem with passing that? Does anybody have, okay. And then, the other, the next one is submitted by Addison Northwest, Rutland Northeast, Otter Valley, Barstow, and Barstow. And it is equal and equitable opportunities in any school receiving public funds. And I'm just gonna read, therefore be it resolved, that the Vermont School Boards Association requests the General Assembly guarantee through law that all public and independent schools receiving public funds adopt and exercise equal and equitable opportunities in admissions, programs, and practices in order to operate in the state of Vermont, and that the state invigorate the moribund school approval processes for public and independent schools to assure operational, financial, and educational accountability and excellence. The Resolutions Committee recommended passing that as a continuing resolution, that that's something that the VSBA has been advocating for, for a number of years. I have to mention that it's a robust conversation, shall we say? Because there's people that have ties to independent schools like Burn Burton, places like that. So there's a lot of conversation going on in the state right now. Catholic schools getting funding, or other Christian schools. And I mean, just that, that's only because there's a court case going on, and multiple court cases. So that conversation is pretty active right now. Does anybody have a problem with supporting that? Resolution 3, Burlington South and 8 other boards, education, finance. And therefore be it resolved, the Vermont School Boards Association fully supports the findings as presented in the pupil waiting factors report dated December 14, or, excuse me, 24th, 2019. And furthermore, the Vermont School Boards Association requests the Vermont Legislature to thoughtfully and expeditiously establish an implementation plan for the report's recommendations. And it's cosponsored by Winuski, Washington Central, Twin Valley, Rutland City, River Valleys, Marlboro, Kingdom East, Hazen Union, and Burlington School District. I believe all those districts would see significant more funding if the waiting study is implemented, as stated. I know from conversations with Dave that we're sort of in the middle. We're not gonna see much of effect either way. But does anybody have a problem passing that resolution? Proposal 4 was brought forward by the Resolutions Committee. And that is, oh goodness, I'm not gonna read all of this. Basically, it's that independent schools provide all the same things that we do, basically, that public schools. You guys want me to read the whole thing? Or did you read it already? Okay, is that a pass? Okay. Resolution 5, equity in anti-racism. The VSBA should demonstrate and promote the unequivocal collective responsibility for equitable and inclusive education environments by recognizing, responding, and speaking out against injustice and racial inequity. In support of this goal, the VSBA recommits to the following. One, promote and support implicit bias training for all faculty and staff in Vermont public schools, including athletic and co-curricular personnel and officials across the state. And two, promote professional learning for school leaders and school board members that include but not be limited to equity literacy, curriculum audits, review protocols for examining bias in school policies and procedures, culturally responsive instruction in school culture, student leadership and voice, and examining power and privileges in school. The Resolutions Committee recommended a pass on that, but I am looking for guidance. Okay, hearing none, could I pass? Okay. And that was it. And then, we also had work on, they're changing their bylaws a little bit. I don't know if it's, do you guys want me to just keep going on doing what I think is? Okay, is that okay? Do I have to go through each one, or you're, okay, all right, then we're done with that. You guys all read it and you're good, then that's fine. We have board comments discussing regarding the public comments from the last meeting. And that was in regards to Christine Billing's submission, that public comment. Dave had sent out something to everybody, but he got no response from in terms of answering that, and he said that I could read the letter to the public. But I'd like to open that conversation up for people. I'm sending you- I'm sending you, as this is background for an agenda item requested by your board chair as well as another board member. Adrian requested the presentation slide that was brought up at our last public meeting be addressed. Since it was taken out of context, the slide image could and likely was misinterpreted by members of the public, and we thought that this should be clarified. The slide in question was a part of a presentation that was shared with all district staff on January 25th and with most of our board members on February 9th, 2021. I say most for two reasons. Not all of our current board members were on the board on February 9th, and not all of our board members have attended the more recent training sessions with Dr. Brown. We have averaged only seven to eight board members present out of 11. Let's see. Our next training is a joint session with the board and leadership team in person with Dr. Brown on Monday, December 13th. Please mark your calendars if you have not already, but in answer to the, to the concern. The slide shared, which you were given a printed copy of, was part of an overview of the dynamics of cultural norms that exist in the U.S. That slide was part of a sequence of slides that connected aspects of American culture and what the body of research in that field shows is a part of a culture that maintains status quo and the prominence of white cultural expectations over others, which is often termed in the literature as white supremacy culture. Another side note, discussing that research does not inherently label all white people as white supremacists, which is specific connotations and images associated with it as a term. Those connotations and images often emerge among the primary obstacles to some individuals engaging in that type of discussion in the first place. Bringing the question up, are you calling me a white supremacist? It is a question that some may ask as those types of conversations unfold. The answer is no, but that answer only emerges by remaining in the conversation and engaging in the thinking and reflection that are a natural part of the process in any high-quality training and professional growth. That individual slide is not evidence that critical race theory is taught in our schools. And if asked by you or any one of our teacher, or by you or anyone, our teachers can affirm clearly for you that critical race theory is not taught in our schools. Rather, that slide is evidence that professional educators and board members do have the capacity and desire to engage in bigger picture, thoughtful, challenging conversations that look at the dynamics of research culture and perspective, even when uncomfortable, in order to develop professionally and grow as educators and leaders in a very complicated world. I believe that this willingness to learn and stretch ourselves professionally is what we should expect of all of our educators and leaders, both appointed and elected. As stated above, I'm happy to provide this response at the next board meeting, but obviously he, Dave is not here, so I am doing that. For final context, equity work in schools did not begin yesterday or a year ago, as I heard stated in a committee meeting recently, or even two years ago. We began our district work in, district work in earnest five to six years ago. We developed an in-house equity committee in 2016 to begin looking at our systems, moral and legal obligations, and areas of need. The board established an official board policy 16 months ago, becoming among the first of many boards in the state to do so. Federal law and C L B actually created the legal and logistic context requiring this work to be done in 2002. Yes, 2002. Updated federal legislation, E S S A replaced N C L, so No Child Left Behind. And I'm not sure what E S S A stands for. And that upped the stakes for this work in 2015. Equity-based work has been a requirement in our field for nearly two decades. For those who were at our last section, our session with Dr. Brown, you will likely recall that all of the information as it was discussed, recalled all of this information as it was discussed with the group. The same was discussed with our faculty and staff at the training that occurred earlier that day. And it closed with, I hope this information is helpful. I'm not sure how much discussion we want to have, and I don't know if, Jody, did you want to weigh in on this at all or, or not? I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
No, I mean, I would add, S S A is every student succeed act.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
That I can.
Okay. I mean, I remember that slide, and I remember going, oh, okay. Yeah, I can, I can see that. I don't know if the other people who were at the training remember the context of the conversation. Many of you weren't, weren't there, so that sort of inhibits this conversation a little bit. And I don't want to be the only one having this conversation.
I feel like that was a helpful letter to write to give that slide more context. And it's not a useful conversation for us to have a quarter of 10 when those weren't there.
That's fair enough. Okay.
I think she was concerned, she's brought it up twice now, that the board, there are other ways to teach this besides Louisville Brown. That's her concern.
Yes.
And through that context, or that lens, as we say now, of white versus black and the majority race, and if you're white, you expect responsibility, and that's not the culture of other, all these things are out there. And she's just simply saying she would like us to look at fair, just like a 20 or 25-minute video, look at the board, and see if we could approach this equity through a different way than the Louisville Brown way. That's what she's asking.
Okay.
I'm going to actually argue one of the things. We had to start somewhere. And we went with someone who we, when research was qualified, had the background. You look for the people who are experts, and you look for people who, we know they're experts by what they have for what's on their resume. So he was a starting point. I think it's important that we finish the work that we've done with him, and that doesn't stop us, and our work doesn't stop there. So that doesn't mean that this, the other curriculum here around equity wouldn't be considered for further down the line, but we need to at least finish what we started with Louisville. And Jody, you might want to comment to that, too.
And I'm just curious, Bruce, were you at any of his trainings?
He was at one.
Bruce.
Were you, were you at the trainings with Mr. Brown?
I was at one, and I went to one in Burlington for a full day, and I didn't agree with her then.
I, Maria asked, sorry.
That was my question.
So I just wanted to just bring a wonder about just precedent and wondering about decision-making on P D providers. So in this case, Dr. Brown has worked with the board and with the L T and with the full staff. And so as discussing decision-making around P D providers, it might be helpful to think about parsing that out for protocol, right? Because the board wouldn't normally get involved with a P D provider for a literacy train, for, but it might be the case that the board would like to be more involved with choosing a board training. I just, I don't know if there, there might be difference there.
Thank you. That's a, that's a valid point. I have always felt comfortable with the information that has been provided at different points in the time I've been on the board. And I felt very uncomfortable when I first started on the Mill River Board, because we had a curriculum committee that was on the board. And I have to tell you, it felt really weird to be sitting as a, as a board member with, yeah, I had kids, and yeah, I went through school, but I don't have training in, in teaching necessarily. I have a college degree, but it's not in, in education. And it felt very out of place for board members to be saying, well, I want you to use this book and not that book. It just didn't, you know, I mean, we hire expertise. It's, it's no different than any of the other decisions we made. You defer to expertise, and you choose your expertise. And if you don't, you know, agree on a consistent basis, then maybe you choose, you know, you change your, the people that, that are giving you advice. But I, I would feel very uncomfortable with this board deciding on, on the curriculum that the school teaches.
Well, I think that's why the curriculum committee went away.
I think so. I mean, it was, it was very strange.
I was actually chair of the curriculum committee at one point.
It was weird, wasn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. And, and so when we reorganized, the curriculum committee went out the door, which was fine. I, I think at the time, no, I won't get into the history of it, but nonetheless, it doesn't exist, so I don't think it needs to exist.
Okay.
Having sat through a couple of Louisville Brown's trainings since I joined the board, I never really had a lot of issues with the training. I always felt, for the most part, they were informative. You know, we, we covered a lot of things. Certainly a different perspective on a lot of things, but, you know, looking at the, the screenshots of the slides that were provided, you know, I, it's almost like they're reading between the lines that I think is drawing a lot of the public attention. You know, for example, one of the slides, it says white supremacy culture, and it lists a lot of things here that necessarily aren't bad things, you know, right to comfort, individualism, quality over quantity. But then he goes to the extent of putting them in poison jars.
That I don't believe was part of the conversation. That was, that's, that's another slide. That wasn't one of the other slides.
Those were the two slides that came together.
What?
I can tell you about that. When you take Louisville Brown, he uses D R racism.org. You go off that site, and there's workbooks you could access. And that, that's, when you start reading that site, it is very much off the middle of the road.
But, but my comment is that that wasn't a slide that was presented to anybody.
It was not presented, but that's the.
No, but I'm clarifying that for the, for the camera.
Yeah, I hear you.
My apologies. They're, they're submitted together, I suspect.
Because that is a very, that's a much more like, whoa.
Yeah, that's what caught my eye.
But that was not part of the presentation.
Sorry.
So, so that, that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Apologies.
No, you didn't have to apologize. I'm just saying, I mean, I don't want you to go away thinking it either.
Yeah, no, I, I thought they were both slides that were presented.
No, they weren't.
I guess I misunderstood.
I don't know how much farther we want to go with this at, at 10 o'clock at night. I'm content with, with where we are at the moment. We can continue this conversation. We do still have committee business. Negotiations is my committee who don't really have anything to say. We're continuing with teachers, and we haven't started yet with support staff, although they have initiated interest in starting negotiations because their contract runs out this June 30th. Finance, I, since Liz isn't here, I will bring up for our vote, a bus payment apparently that needs to get paid for $12,899.02. Tuesday?
You've got two others in there, right?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Let it go then.
Oh, yeah, don't worry. I'm going to do the other one. There's three. Then the accounts payable warrant, I mean, Doug, do you want to deal with this?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Accounts payable warrant, and that is general fund for, I guess I should put on my glasses, Then a general fund payment of $6,975. Good grief, these glasses are terrible. Is that 75 or 78? 78.54. And then A S P for $396.24, and the lunch fund for $2,706.15. Student activity accounts of zero. So that was a total of $336,652.15. And then we have the payroll warrants with the October 8th payment of $689,274.25, and October 15th, regular pay warrant for $6,175.76. For a total of, this warrant for $695,450.1. I did not total all of them together, but I would like a motion to approve the three warrants.
I do have a total, if you'd like. The total is $104,229.49. I'm sorry. Let me do the other number. My bad.
What is that for?
That's the total of all your, all three that you just read.
It has to be more than that. One of them was for $695,000.
Hmm.
Okay. So we're going to vote on all three warrants.
Let's do that. Yeah.
That I read.
This has got to be part of a computer, I swear to God.
Did you have any comments on that?
No, everything was fine. Everything seemed to be fine.
Okay, good.
Are we approving the bus thing, too? Or did that?
The bus is.
Is in there?
Yes.
What was that?
One for $12,899.02. That's the bus warrant.
That's a payment, not a full bus.
Oh, okay. I was confused on what it was for.
I think it was missed.
It's just a payment made from the general fund, so we have to vote on it.
Oh, all right.
Do I have a motion to, I guess, I can't make, make the motion, but.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Go ahead, Asha.
I'll take it. A second.
Is there any conversation? Doug has already said everything looked good when he reviewed it. Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand. It was unanimous. Thank you.
Okay.
And then have community engagement.
So we, I'm only going to go over the community conversation because that's coming up on Monday. And the people's schedule, and that conversation is, again, it's not a business meeting, it doesn't take any action, it just is an opportunity to discuss things sort of going on in the district that the board is aware of, or decisions the board's made in the past, and where those came from, or information that people are looking for that they're not quite sure where to get, and maybe help clarify some things that people don't understand that are going on. So the people who are signed up for it at this point are Bjorn, Bruce, and myself. My only concern is we're all from Wallingford. Are you still both available?
What day is that again?
Monday at 6:30 PM, and it will be virtual.
The 25th?
Monday, the, you know, it says 18th on this list, but that would not be accurate, huh? We're going to do it on the 25th. Nope. I don't know what I was thinking. That's wrong.
On Monday?
It's Monday, yeah.
Monday. It's a Monday. So are.
Monday, the 25th, 6:30.
Yes. Bjorn, are you both available for that?
Yep.
Is everyone okay having three Wallingford? I mean, one of us is East Wallingford, so.
There's nobody left to.
Okay. Then I think, then I think we're, we're good, and we have Adrian as a backup in case someone can't make it. So if there's a reason that one of us can't make it, we will ask Adrian, but we have to tell her. Yeah, that's what Adrian said. Yeah, that's what Adrian said.
Can you send me the link and if I can pop on, on Monday?
Yes, you're welcome to come. You just have to be careful about community engagement members, because it gets a little close to having a forum about committee, and since it's community engagement, but, which you're not, so.
So I'm not, yeah.
Yeah, you are welcome. I will send.
Yeah, send it.
Invitation. I didn't want to make the invitation, I was, I wrote it yesterday, but I didn't want to make it public until I confirmed that we were able to be there.
Yeah, because if I can log on and I'll be Clarendon, so we'll help you.
So that would be really great. Thanks, Andrea. And I will send an email invitation, I will send an announcement to it, to our front porch forum in Wallingford, and I will send one to you to share with Clarendon, and I will send one to Tim, and I will send, can I give one to you? Yes, and Tim. And we're good. Okay. Thank you. Okay. BJ, you said you had something?
Yeah, we didn't have a quorum at the last meeting, and we have a lot of work to execute.
Actually, I had some clarification on that. We could not vote on a quorum unless we change bylaws and make some determinations on whether or not I can be a member of, a quorum-making member. But we could have kept meeting, and then everything that we had said would have been validated at this meeting or at a future policy committee meeting. That was a mistake that we both made.
Yeah, so.
So, but that brings up another question, though, because we also had a finance meeting where nobody was there, just about. And finance needs people to come. And we have another meeting on the 25th at 5:00 PM. So I'm really hoping that everybody on the finance committee can make it. And now, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
No, that's perfectly fine. And I think there's, I think that's something we probably should add to agenda and just have a more clarifying thing, not just at the very end of, at 10 o'clock. What you were just talking about.
Oh, yeah, no, I was just clarifying it for you. I'm sorry.
Yeah. But I was wondering if the group members, Asha, Len, Maria, Bruce, wouldn't mind having a meeting on the 26th at 5:30 Tuesday, unless.
That's great for me.
For policy?
For policy.
I'm on that, too, and I can do that.
Oh, yes.
At 5:30 on the 26th?
Yes, please.
Brian.
What time?
Brian, can you add me to policy, please?
The 26th, BJ?
Yeah. Is there a reason why we shouldn't do it there?
That two, that's Tuesday, right?
Tuesday.
Yeah, it's just next Tuesday at 5:30.
5:30. And again, I apologize, and I sent you an email. I just, I.
It's okay. We did find out there were three board members there, but there weren't three committee members there. And we've learned that with. And we've learned that with the chair, we could have held a discussion, but we couldn't have had any votes, right?
I apologize, too. I had a work conference that had me up in Burlington.
It's okay, just one of those times where, uh...
I couldn't move my head.
Was it 5:30 that we're doing, or?
Yeah, 5:30.
Okay. All right. So that was done, we are on transact other legal business. Does anybody have any other legal business that we haven't already talked about, since we seem to have done just about everything under this one?
Were you gonna talk about the ad hoc committee?
That was going to be under agenda building.
Okay, go ahead.
And board goals.
And board goals. Okay, so nothing under transact. So agenda building, I wanted to put in the ad hoc committee that we absolutely just, I would've tried to do it tonight, but it's just too late.
We have to do that.
I agree.
This came up, this came up a month ago, first meeting.
Bruce, do you have an example of an ad hoc, if people want to stay, we can do it tonight?
We need, we put it off.
We have two ad hoc committees.
We do.
We do.
Okay.
I'm not gonna force people to stay here. If people would like to stay, we can do it.
Who's on the ad hoc committee? I'll take, who's on the ad hoc committee?
I don't even know.
Could we stay a few minutes afterward and organize a committee?
Sure.
But we, but this board needs to give you a charge.
Well, give me the charge.
I thought...
We've done it.
No, we haven't.
I thought we had two committees.
We have two committees, but we need to give them a task to do, not just an open-ended...
One was Matt was chair, which was looking into...
The inclusion.
Yep. The other things. And then Bruce was chair, looking at why students are leaving the school.
That was the task. I was not the chair. I just brought up the motion.
Can we clarify, does everyone know which, if they are members of those committees? Do we know?
I volunteered.
Yeah.
I'm perfectly happy to stay. If we would like to do the charge for the committee that will be looking at why students are leaving, I personally would like to make the charge broad, so that what we are asking of that committee, that they request, I mean, this is, this is my suggestion, that the committee requests that the administration, through whatever office, has lists of students that have left over the last three, three to four years, that a very simple survey, go out to all of those families, maybe even kids that have come into the district in that same three years, so that we get a very broad answer as to why people are coming and going. We might not get people to answer, but we absolutely have to have it be a relatively blind process with non-pointed questions, because if we want answers that mean something, they have to be very, not pointed in a single direction. And that's my suggestion, and I'm willing to get other conversations out there.
I'm gonna add a second, a different approach to this. I'm definitely not comfortable asking families why.
They don't have an answer.
Well, I know, but I just, I think it would be, I would rather hear the feedback of families who have left, of what they think we could improve, as opposed to why they left. So it's almost a different approach to...
Different, we've asked the same question.
Yeah.
But you know, that, even that one question implies that they left because there's something lacking.
Not necessarily. They may have left.
It implies that. What could we have done for you not to leave?
Well, you don't word it that way.
No, but what I'm saying is, it has to be very carefully structured, so that you don't put people in a direction of answering. I mean, I know when, when I get a phone call...
Yeah, exactly.
And somebody's saying, so, you know, and they ask some question that there is no way to answer without sounding negative about whatever topic they want, they want to find out your answer. I want to be careful that we are, we are asking everybody, and that includes the people who said, hey, we moved. You know, my husband got a job in, or I got a job in, you know, West Rutland, and we decided to move to the IRA, or whatever. I mean, I think you have to ask everybody.
We do.
And you have to, and you could just say, moved, dissatisfied, you know, I mean, what, all of those, those things can be options, and just have people answer.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, BJ.
Yeah, the person I'm uncomfortable asking questions of is the one who got evicted from their house.
Well, they moved. They don't have to say that.
I know, but they, that's why they moved, so that's why, that's why, I don't want to ask why. I want to ask...
Oh, well, I think just saying you moved, did you move out of the district? How about that?
It can be.
Something like that.
I mean, that's, when we're looking for a charge for this committee, I just want them to be very conscientious that why may be a very personal thing, and gaining feedback as to how we can improve is a more positive approach to our school system.
I wonder if it isn't a, you know, there's more than one question, you know, I think once we get out front and simply find out why someone left, then if they say they, for example, if they say that they left because they were dissatisfied of something at the school, then that's a great opportunity for us to ask, you know, what could we have done better? I think that we do need to have that chain of questions, so that, I'm with you, so that we actually can take something away from it, rather than, oh, look, these people moved, these people didn't like it, these people, you know. So we can do actual data that will, that can give us something to work with, so we can actually implement, you know.
So do we want the committee to write the questions, and then have them reviewed, I think, before they get sent out? Is that...
Sure.
Didn't David send us some information? He sent some statistics.
Yeah, he sent some stuff, and it was, from talking with him, it was largely, it sounded like it was largely from talking to the front office staff about what they heard, why the person left, in that there was no, there is no actual documentation.
Yep.
Okay, that's what I was...
For it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it...
Brian, Brian's raising his hand, he might actually know better.
The documentation that we would have would be, sorry, the documentation that we would have would be when students exit encoded a certain way for state reporting, so we know if they go to homeschool, we know if they transfer to another school locally, we know if they go to a private institution, so some of those things we do have. I think I saw that data, and I think that's genuinely what it was saying.
Some kids just sort of disappear.
You know, that doesn't happen too frequently, because we get records requests when they land up somewhere else.
We have this conversation last week.
That would be basically absence unknown, they just don't show up for ten days, but that doesn't actually happen too often.
Oh, good.
Generally do have a sense of where they land.
Okay. I would be, I would be happy to write up that we ask the ad hoc committee to develop questions that are simple, that are not directional, that ask for enough data for us to be able to get information that we need, and that we ask for at least three years' worth of kids that have left. Is that satisfactory? Does anybody have anything to add? They don't like it? What?
Is the committee gonna follow through with the, with the, I don't just want to make up questions and give it to somebody to follow through and do the, do the, get the answers. I want the committee to get the answers.
Right. This is a start, and I think you're right. I mean, somebody's gonna have to collate the answers, and I think the committee would be well-placed to do that.
It'd be a good, be a good thing to start building questions and building a survey, and at least get, get the ball rolling, and then we'll go from there and figure out who's gonna send them out, who's gonna correlate the data, who's gonna...
Well, I think the school has to send them out, because you can't have all that data.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, it's just the first step of many in the process.
Yep. Is that an adequate start? And then, I'm perfectly content with having the committee look at the, look at the data. We will have to make sure that the information goes back into the district, because I don't believe this, that committee has any, you know, should not be seeing names and actual reasons, because you don't know what, how people will fill out the survey. So I think maybe it should be reviewed by administration, or somebody in the front office, or whoever opens the mail, to make sure that names aren't, aren't attached, addresses aren't attached, that kind of thing.
I think once the committee meets, we can, we can say exactly what's gonna happen, and present it to the board, to the board, and say, this is what we'd like to do.
Okay. So before anything happens, you will bring back a report to the board?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Ann, do you have enough to put in the minutes?
I'll call you.
Okay. You're getting tired, too. Good start. Matt?
Yes.
You volunteered to do an art installation meeting?
Yeah, I'll probably have to schedule a meeting here, but maybe I'll send out an email tonight with the committee members. I do have a list at the House. I know Art Peterson had submitted a proposal. I know he's not, he doesn't want to back the proposal anymore, because we still went ahead and hung the flag, so I'm not really sure how to go from there, but I, I will go ahead and schedule a meeting and get us all together and try to figure out how to go from here.
I do remember having conversations even before that, about alternate...
Okay, all right.
...things, and I think that was one of them, you know, so I...
You can also, the committee can also get together with the art teachers in the schools.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that would be...
I think, I think having, having people outside of just the board on it would be a very good idea.
I think it'd be wonderful if we, if it was student-led personally.
I can reach out tomorrow to Dave Youngs and see if he's got an idea of who to join us on that. And I've got the list of the committee members at the House. I do not have it on me. I thought I did.
All right.
Ann's waving.
Could you make sure that committee members are on these meetings?
Absolutely.
This isn't...
Good point. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, because you have to, you know, there's gonna be open...
Yeah.
I also wanted to put on the agenda for, are we done with this conversation? Okay, I'm seeing anybody. I would like to add to the agenda for the next meeting, that we come back to addressing an inclusion statement, because that has been lost in the wayside. And I'll bring some examples next time, that we can hash out or get rid of. Len's favorite part of the meeting, unless somebody else has anything to put onto agenda.
No.
Come on, Len. You're good at it. Come on.
It isn't really rocket science. We need to have a specific time set aside to work on the board goals. When we did it the other night...
We were gonna adjourn, I'm sorry.
No, no, I brought it up earlier.
I know. I thought we had discussed it as part of the, as part of the conversation, but, of scheduling. Do we, we were talking about doing something virtually.
Would this be, Len, are you proposing that we continue to have that one working meeting a month, but also supplement with...
You need to have something else. At the, at the meeting that we had, the last meeting, when we talked about, we did letter C under number two.
No, it was hard to get started.
I'm with you. I would propose to continue working meetings and to do as Len is suggesting to have that.
I know it's difficult for folks to, I mean, we all have commitments. I get that. I understand that. And, and we're gonna have ad hoc committee meetings, but to me, the board goals should be our number-one priority.
Do you have a date that you want to suggest?
I don't have a calendar. Pick a date, I don't care.
Well, are we talking about a Saturday? Do we want to try and get together on a nighttime? I mean, the last time when we tried to find a Saturday, we were out in the end of November.
I know that Liz had stated that she prefers, I believe Liz had stated that she prefers weekends, but Matt, our understanding was that weekends are challenging for you.
They are.
So that was what we were sort of weighing, and obviously, we wanted to have everyone present if possible.
Well, you guys give me a date, I'll try to make it work. I just sold my business today, so I'm gonna be unemployed, so.
I have a business.
My hotel in Killian.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations.
Yeah. Just come down off the mountain.
Yeah, so weekends should be easier for me going forward, so.
Hang out at the store.
There we go. Get a good brew of coffee.
I mean, we can look at Saturday the 6th, Saturday the 13th, for 9 to 11. We got a lot done on a Saturday morning.
Definitely can't do the 13th.
I can't do the 13th, I could do the 6th.
That's 6th.
6th is good.
I can't. I just started a job.
Andrea, can't.
Oh, wait, you're working at the store that day.
Yeah, I am your weekend crew.
I could also do the 20th, but I don't know, Thanksgiving's the next week, but on the tail end, of course.
Yeah.
Can we do the 20th?
Can I do the 6th?
Yeah. I can't, no.
You can't do the 6th.
No.
What is it, the 20th?
I can plan out.
Who couldn't come on the 13th?
I can't go on the 13th.
I can't come on the 13th.
I can come the 20th, but I can't come the 13th.
You can't come on the 6th. Just one. The 6th beats the 13th.
I mean, we don't know...
Can't come on the 20th.
I'm available on the 20th.